Love.
You call me Norah, ask Commissioner Wayne to do the end of the game.
Father. Once again there, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the minute blessing you have shared upon all of us. Father, we know that no matter how rough the storm is, that you have the power to be still. Now, Father, be with this board of county commissioners as we do the business of Columbia County for our citizens. As always, Father, we ask you to bless our military and our first responders, but especially our military that give us military personnel in the past, the present, and the future to give us this opportunity to have an open meeting and an open forum. Look over them and look over their families that they serve to protect this nation. Now, Father, most of all, we are grateful for your son, Jesus Christ, who was beaten all night long with a cavalry Friday morning. He was nailed to the cross. He suffered. He shedded his blood for forgiveness of our sins. On the third day, he arose from the dead after being buried on Friday. He descended into heaven, where he sits at the right hand side of the Father, our God almighty, where he comes to judge the quick and the dead. We thank you for him. We thank you for his suffering, and we thank you for his glory. These are all the persons who act in thy name, Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
Amen.
I pray that we can do this right.
Do you have any additions in relation to the agenda?
Yes, sir. There's one addition in your package. It's a resolution number 2022 R-50 for a safe streets grant. The state of Florida approached us this week and asked us to adopt this, and we can possibly plan to grant it during these phases.
Chairman, I have one discussion at the end of the meeting. Maybe for me, y'all two. I brought one up last week.
All right. The first item is the Safe Streets Resolution. I guess I can read this. Resolution 2022 R-50. Wait a second. Do we have a motion for approval, Jim?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I've got to keep you straight up here.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
Mr. Chair? We have one additional item, which is?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I present a former contractor that went, fought, killed some trees. I don't have permission to pay for those trees that were killed.
You want me to add that? Say that.
He's asking for permission to pay the trees that were killed.
Okay, we'll back that item seven.
We have to read adopt the amendment.
Make the motion. We read adopt. It's in there.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Now, we got the resolution first. We're doing it first. Oh, you want to do it under? I have a proclamation here about Trinity United. No, that's a church. Proclamation 2022 P-09 Trinity United Methodist Church Male Chorus Day. Whereas the Trinity Methodist Church Male Chorus was birthed under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit and brought to life by Mr. Ashton Parnell 27 years ago and currently co-chaired with Mark, Mr. Mark Philpott. And whereas Pastor J.D. Johnson blessed the initiation of Trinity Methodist Male Chorus and empowered them to build a community of male fellowship as a creative reflection of the congregation. And whereas the Trinity United Methodist Church Male Chorus endeavors to foster spiritual growth upon the congregation by proclaiming their faith through song. And whereas the Trinity Methodist Church Male Chorus is a powerful group of black males, clearly a dynamic force inspired by the, inspired, empowered by the Holy Spirit. And whereas the Trinity United Methodist Church Male Chorus traveled throughout Columbia County to uplift the spirits of people residing in healthcare facilities. And whereas the United, the Trinity United Methodist Church Male Chorus ignites the atmosphere of the worship service as their individual faith unifies and collectively ushers the people into the presence of God. And whereas the Trinity United Methodist Church Male Chorus contributed to the continuity of the church's virtual worship services when faced with the challenge of COVID-19. And whereas the current pastor, Reverend Dr. Pam McGreen, recognizes that the Trinity United Methodist Church Male Chorus is a valuable and transformational contribution to the spiritual life of Columbia County. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners, Columbia County, do hereby proclaim the third Sunday of September as Trinity United Methodist Church Male Chorus Day, dated this eighth day of September 2022, Board of County Commissioners, Robbie Hollendorf and James Swisher.
Move to the dog.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Is Reverend Green here?
Okay.
As we'll go now into the public hearings.
Tonight, we're going to have our series of annual budget public hearings. It may take a while. We'll get through them all. So before we get into it, basically give you an idea of what's in the budget so far. The highlights are they're holding the mill rate. Pro人们 hold mill rate 7.815%, which is the same as last time, 7.815 million. We're also proposing to hold solid waste assessment to 190. Secondly, everyone was reading where we sent out the maximum proposed fire assessment at the increase of $80 per year on the residential. We're proposing to make it $50 per year on the residential history, decreasing that increase to something that we feel is more appropriate. We continue funding the annual repaving program, which we do every year. We are using a lot of grant and year-end monies to put in capital projects, and we placed all the capital projects in one fund. And the reason I mention that is, two years ago, they changed the charter. And the charter changed how we handle year-end rollover monies, fund balance monies, and said that we had to incorporate them as part of the budget. So last year, we tried to do that, and we then took all the money, we appropriated it, and we put them in different departments where that project seemed fit. The problem was if somebody wanted to find out where do we stand on these projects, you can't follow them because you don't know where they're buried in the budget. So this year, we made the decision to try and pull them all out of the budget, put all the capital projects in one fund. So if anybody wants to find out what we're funding, what we're not funding, where the money is, it's clear, it's transparent. You just go to the capital projects fund. It's right there. You can see. So again, we're trying to comply with the charter changes and make it easier and more transparent, which I think was the intent of the charter at the time when they changed the rules on how we handle rollover funds. Long story short, we got that out. The other thing is employee compensation. We are proposing a $3 an hour cross-the-board rate so that no city employee will make less than $15 an hour. We will be in compliance with the change to the state constitutional amendment if this budget passes and not have to worry about that in the future. There's no increase in health insurance rates. We're very fortunate this year. We got a 0% increase in health insurance costs. That's brilliant. Animal control in this budget is being transferred to the sheriff's office. There will be a transition period. This budget reflects that animal control will be handled by the end of the year by the sheriff's office. Information Systems is now a department. Before, they were buried in the Board of County Commissioners' office. If you needed to find out something about them, you had to figure out which was what. They are now an independent department with their own cost centers, so that you can track those cost centers and keep up with them. Code enforcement is based on a change in board name last year. It's now under building and zoning. And so code enforcement is now a part of the building and zoning department, which improves the communication between the two and makes code enforcement a lot more, hopefully, a lot more efficient and a lot more effective. We increased the countywide willing budget to $1,121,000. And utilities are fully funded, including the full funding of the Fort White system. Last year was the first time we tried to budget for a utility park. And we tried to guess what's it going to take to do the city of Fort White because we're going to take over the city of Fort White utility. Now we have one year of experience. We can make those numbers realistic. So the utility budget is a lot more realistic than what our actual cost expenditures are with Ellisville, with Mason City, with the town of Fort White, with the sewer system. Having said that, it also includes now a utility director. You are to the point of be hiring a utility director. We're to prove one mid-year. This budget includes the cost of that utility director. And there will be rate adjustments. And I say that because, one, when we took over the town of Fort White's utility system, they had passed an ordinance that said there will be rate increases to fund our system every year for five years. We also discovered that the utility rates in Ellisville are very, very different from the town of Fort White. So what we're hoping is this reflects our revenue requirements and that we will hopefully in very, very near future come back to you with a utility rate that is one rate for the whole system rather than different rates for different parts of the system. So some people will get higher bills. Some people will get lower bills. But we want to be consistent with that. And we want to operate the utility like an enterprise fund and eventually hopefully make it either an enterprise fund or what the committee has talked about is actually going into a utility authority. So we're trying to get all our ducks in a row. This budget reflects full funding of the Fort White system, reflects the utility director, and it does reflect the fact that we will be adjusting rates. So what we're going to get tonight is the reading of all the assessments for the final adoption. So we'll go through a bunch of assessments for street lighting and road paving. If those are adopted tonight, that is the final adoption of the assessment. Solid waste, that includes fire. In addition to that, we're going to do the first hearing on setting the mill rate and the first hearing on setting the budget. So what that means is, based on the public's input at these public hearings, the board can choose to adjust the budget or the mill rate or whichever they want to do. And we've gotten to the second hearing to make those changes, advertise it, and get it out so that you can come to the second hearing for public comment as well. The second public hearing is on a Tuesday, September 20th, in this room at 5:30. So if you want to come to the second public hearing, it's not on a Thursday. It's on a Tuesday, September 20th. But there's always the two hearings. Tonight's the first hearing. The board will listen to the public. And like I said, we will probably have some changes to the budget. It always happens. That gives us a couple of weeks to get all that done, get it advertised in the paper, get it back to the public, and to the board. So that's what we're doing tonight. So we go straight into the first of the public hearings. The public hearing is an assessment, resolution number 2022 R-47, Carolyn Heights Street Lighting MSBU. It's establishing the rate of $74 per dwelling unit, and it is no change from last year. At this point, if you'd like to open it, follow the comments. It only applies to those residents affected by that project. So your property has to receive benefit from that project and get into that assessment.
Okay, I'm going to hereby open the public hearing on resolution number 2022 R-47 involving Carolyn Heights. Is there anybody who would like to speak on that? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution number 2022 R-47, Carolyn Heights Streetlight District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next resolution is 2022 R-46, Emerald Lakes Street Lighting MSBU. Like the commissioner said, this only applies to those property in Emerald Lakes that are affected by the street lighting project. The rate this year will be 4604, and it is no change from last year. And that, I request you open the public hearing.
Okay, I hereby open the public hearing on resolution number 2022 R-46, final rate resolution for Emerald Lake subdivision. Do I have anybody who wants to comment on that? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to accept resolution number 2022 R-46.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is resolution 2022 R-45, Laurel Lakes Street Lighting MSBU. Again, it only applies to those people in Laurel Lakes that are affected by the street lighting, and it is $118.53 per residential dwelling. It is the same rate as was charged last year. I request that you open the public hearing.
Okay, I move, or I hereby open the public hearing on resolution number 2022 R-45, final rate resolution for Laurel Lakes. If there's someone who would like to speak on that. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion to be approved, resolution number 2022 R-45, Laurel Lake Streetlight.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next resolution is resolution number 2022 R-46. It is the Pine Ridge Road Improvement MSBU. It actually contains two components. One is actually the road paving improvement, which would be $90.10 per dwelling in it, and the other is the maintaining of the road, which would be $130.17 per dwelling in it. Again, this is no change from last year, and I request that you open the public hearing.
I hereby open the public hearing on resolution number 2022 R-44 for the final rate resolution for Pine Ridge Court. Would anybody like to speak on that? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
I make a motion to be approved, resolution number 2022 R-44.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next resolution is resolution number 2022 R-43, Spring Hollow Street Lighting MSBU. Again, it only applies to those people that take advantage of the street lighting. It is $55.50 per dwelling in it. It is the same as it was last year. And that, I request you open the public hearing.
I hereby open the public hearing on resolution number 2022 R-43, final rate resolution for Spring Hollow Subdivision. Would anybody want to speak on that? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution number 2022 R-43, Spring Hill, Spring Hollow Street Lighting MSBU, district at 55.50 per dwelling.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
So the next resolution is resolution number 2022 R-48. That is the solid waste collection and disposal services assessment. There is an assessment study that was in your package. It basically says we could charge more than this, but we advertise the maximum rate at what is the current rate. So this is the current rate of 198.06. That's what we're proposing, same rate as last year, no increase, no change. And with that, I request the board open the public hearing.
I hereby open the public hearing on resolution number 2022 R-48, final rate resolution for solid waste. Do I have anybody who wants to speak about that? Seeing no one, I'll hereby close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution 2022 R-48, final rate resolution for solid waste.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And then this is the resolution number 2022 49, Fire Protection Services. This establishes the fire protection assessment for all of Columbia County. Basically, to do a fire assessment, you have to figure out what your revenue requirement is, and then take that revenue requirement based on calls of your service, length of time the apparatus is at the calls of service, manpower that's at service. So basically, figure out what each category of property needs of that budget and allot the budget accordingly. And there is a study in the TIBA packet on how they calculated these rates. One of the things that happened is the state legislature changed the rules and said we cannot assess vacant properties the way they'd always been assessed. So that set of properties no longer paid part of the assessment, which meant more of the burden shifted to the other categories of properties based on what the legislature forced us to do in this new study. Having said that, when we originally did the study, and what we did in the preliminary rate proposal was we included assessment rates scheduled and had residential fire assessment rates at $80 per dwelling. The board had a lot of conversations in our workshops, and we ended up coming to a $50 increase in the residential rates, and then that would apply accordingly to different categories based on how service is allocated, the percentage of service they use. So this is less than what was originally proposed, $50, but it is, and I'll read it to you. Single-family home homes, $269.98. Multifamily, $148.49 per dwelling in it. Land properties, used to everywhere is land is basically less than or equal to 160 acres, $3 and 1 cent parcel. Land over 160 acres and less than 640 acres is 0.0306 per each additional acre. And finally, the non-residential component, the commercial went to 0.1201 per square foot. Industrial went to 0.00480 per square foot, and institutional went to 0.1300 per square foot. Again, we're asking at this point for the board to open it for public comment.
Okay, I hereby open public hearing for resolution number 2022 R-49, final rate resolution for fire protection services. I believe we have a couple, at least one. Jose, come on up, and then, okay, we'll have you next. Let me have Jose first. He gave me a card. Yeah. Is there someone else? I'm not sure. Karen, is Karen, do you want to speak on this?
No.
No, okay.
All right. I'm the guy that they frisk. The Secret Service frisked me. Sixth grade, 3rd to Washington. Okay, I'm Jose de Palino. I'm a resident. I've been a resident of Columbia County since 1974. And I got the modification. And when I see the modification, the first thing that I do is I look at the numbers. And the numbers that I look at was that the inflation is supposed to be about 8.1%. Round it up to about 10%. The increase in the fire protection went up before the numbers, because now I realize that it has changed. It went up 67.2%. And my question was, how can you justify if inflation is 8% or 9% such a large increase compared to what people are paying now? Because, you know, we heard everything is going up extremely high, especially if you are on a fixed income. So every penny counts. And my question was that, you know, why 67.2%?
Thank you very much, David.
The legislature didn't take that into consideration when they told us what we got to do. As David said, the legislature changed the rules on how we calculate vacant property. So we had to make that difference up in between the other categories. There was no other revenue within the fire department except for, I call it, the user fee. The people that use it have to pay for it. So there was any other revenue unless you went into contingency, which I would never do to make up the difference. The legislature didn't take what you just asked, the inflation rate. They say this is what you're not going to do anymore.
Listen, I'm not against increasing the rate because everything has gone up, and first responders, they deserve it. But that was just my question. That's 67.2%. Now, it did change a little bit from here to notice that I got, so this is a little bit much further than what you guys said.
Yeah, thank you, sir. We heard you. That's what we heard. Yeah, it was hard, because I want to say something about this. You know, these things are done every five years. Things are a lot more expensive now than they were five years ago. And something that wasn't mentioned is we had to, we had to spend more money because of the minimum wage rate, too. That went toward fire, and so we just got hit with a bunch of things for fire assessment, you know, just inflation. All the things that you get hit by inflation and the new way they're, you know, saying how the property should be spread out. It's just, it's just all at once. And I think, I really think it should be more than every five years. I think we should visit this one often. Because...
Mr. Chair, one might not realize that you pulled a start and sever for a family in Columbia County. They make $12.50. The people at Burger King flipping hamburgers make over that. And their sever is part of this inquiry in the fire protection that we're doing. Back of that, we asked this man to go into a burning house. We paying him $12.50. And we got a lady or a young man at Burger King flipping a hamburger making $15. It just doesn't add up. I'm embarrassed to say, we started our filing law with in Columbia County.
All right. Is there anybody else who would like to come? Come up, sir.
I want to make something perfectly clear. The fire department, police department deserve every raise and every penny they can get. I believe if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So here's my taxes. And in last year, I'm rounding down, no pennies, $12.26. With this increase, $50 is $12.93. So that comes out divided by four, the total, $323. That's a 25% increase from last year. I have a question. Rocky, did you get this letter? Did you read it?
Did you share it?
What?
Did you share it with the county?
Did I share it?
Did you share this letter with the county commissioners?
It was mailed out to everybody.
I'm sorry.
It was mailed out to everybody. I can't see which letter you're holding up. And I'm sure it's a letter that was mailed out to everybody about the fire system.
Uh, my name is...
Oh, oh, this is the letter. Okay.
Those meanos.
This is the letter you emailed me.
No, I didn't email. I left your hard copy.
Yeah. But no, I did. I filled it. I mean, I read the letter.
But it was put in every commission.
Yeah, it was in my box. But I think you emailed it off of it.
No.
Okay. But I've not seen the letter yet.
But you did read it.
Yes, I did read it.
Can I have it back?
Yes.
You got a hard copy.
I did.
So anyway, this is my tax bill, and the manager just told me that it's gone down somewhat. I have no idea where it's gone down somewhat. So I'm hoping that it's not going to be a 25% increase. Now, I realize your hands are tied in some cases. But you sent out a letter with no justification, and the rest of these people that are attending here took offense, just like I did. When you sent out the letter, you always said a justification or reason for it, and I realize there's a lot of detail and a lot of mail and a lot of heat. But the first thing I did is I noticed that my opposition to this letter had a date. And it had written opposition in writing a letter to my county district commissioner prior to this hearing. That doesn't make any sense. And so that's one thing about this letter that I didn't appreciate, that there's no justification. The written opposition prior to the meeting was mandatory. And then as far as another question. When we call for an ambulance, why is a fire truck required to come along? And I'm sure every person who shops at Walmart, Publix, Winnie's or Cherry's, or comes out like Interstate 75, sits down to eat, and they don't know who... and they don't own a home, so I ask you, how much are they paying for fire protection?
Commissioner, you had two minutes, you're at about three, two and two minutes, I didn't know that our timer was different. I don't think you heard it, two minutes.
Usually you have a timer.
Yeah, but it was in the, it's this moment working and I was as confused as you were. So if you can get, I'll give you about fifteen more seconds to close it.
Fifteen more seconds, now close with this, this question. What fraction is included in their purchases when they come off Interstate seventy-five? When they go to Winn-Dixie, when they go to Walmart? Not everybody homes a home. And Columbia County's not growing. The borders are still the same since I moved in here.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Columbia County is growing, I assure you that.
Well, yeah, I was guessing it's equal. Yes.
It might not be growing in boundary, but within Columbia County itself, Columbia County is growing. And I expect the same thing for our visitors when they come here as when I go to another county. I expect to receive the services that I need deemed if I need them. We can't say, oh, you from Alabama, we can't do you any good. That's not, that's not what I meant by word.
You can put something under purchase. Anyway.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a question? Oh, we got somebody else? Oh, come on down. I thought you were doing this, you know, I decided not to. You shook your head at me, I thought you were gonna do it. Oh, okay.
The only thing, I agree, the police officers and the fire, all the paramedics, they all deserve a raise. And I'm not talking about that, but one of the most basic parts of government in our taxes is police and fire. Now, I live in the county, so I'm further than five hundred feet away and it's charted there. Now I'm going to get this fee plus I already have to pay extra on my insurance because I'm in the county with further than five hundred feet from a fire hydrant. So I'm already paying extra and I'm just wondering, is there something you can cut that is not as essential as fire and police because that's our main reason for taxes? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Karen. He's going to answer your question if you want.
The ISO rating is not based, with the county based on a fire hydrant, it's based within a five hundred mile, I mean, a five mile radius of your house and a fire department. Where do you live?
In the water discount.
And where is the fire department located?
It's a quarter of...
Out there, the public's wanting to be fine.
Fine, man. That'd be fine.
You would be in that five mile radius, so you should be getting a discount on your insurance because of the ISO rating.
Well, that was because of the fire hydrant, we don't have one that's five hundred.
The only places we got fire hydrants in the county is where you have city water.
Yeah, we very, we have very deep fire hydrants.
Family Dollar, General Store right there.
Yeah.
I think they have their own fire protection though, we don't have city water there.
That's probably their own, their own system.
They've got like a big tank of water here, microwave yes on that.
Yes.
Yeah. They, they install like a ten dollar gallon tank or something like a quarter for fire protection.
And like I say about the fire protection, it's, it's what it costs. We're not spending any new money, we're not doing anything except giving, trying to get them to the fifteen dollar an hour and trying to keep the services we have now. And it's hard to do, it's hard to do. The county's just as affected by inflation and higher cost as you are, you know, and it's just, it ain't no fun, but it is what it is. Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak.
Public comment, if nobody else is...
Has anybody got any more public comment on this issue?
I, I did hear a question as to why fire trucks run with the ambulance when you get a, when a call. And the reason is because you also have EMS personnel on the fire trucks. You're using fire personnel to supplement the ambulance crew. If that truck, it, 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 there's, there's less fire calls than ambulance calls. So there's a, there's a good chance that the fire department's able to get there first. There's, there's less of a chance that the fire department's already on another call, which is common in, in the EMS side of things. So when that happens, if you've got a fire crew going there first, at least you've got a paramedic on scene stabilizing that patient until the ambulance has arrived, it's actually a good model to use and our fire department does a good job at it. And what I'm going to say right now has nothing to do with our fire department, the job they do, the funding they deserve because they deserve all of it. But we are in a recession and despite us being in a recession, I said this in the budget workshop too, we continually have increased revenues over expenses. And if you're going to raise this fee, to me, this is not the year to raise any taxes or any fees. You've got means in there to make it up this year. I think, do I think we've done a poor job maybe over the years of bringing this fire assessment up and it's adjustment for inflation so you don't get to a point where, you know, you haven't had an increase in five years and, and now you're looking at an eighty dollar increase? Well, yeah, we have, but if you're willing to raise taxes right now in the middle of a recession with what everybody's going through, despite having record reserves, despite having record revenues, and I know it's only fifty dollars, but if you're willing to do it now on this, where else are you going to do it in the future? You've got to make a stand and say, we're going to be conservative, we're going to go a bit conservative because if you do it here, where else are you going to do it? What's going to come up next where we have to raise the rate? The people out there don't really care that fire assessment money goes to the fire department. It's, it's, it's this bucket of money going here, they don't care. You've got record revenues, you've got record reserves, you've got increased revenues over reserves for the last twenty-five years of our county. There's no sense in doing this in this economy and with this inflation. And I'm, and I said it in the budget workshop, I'm not going to let one of my last acts as commissioner break one of the promises I can't bend on, so I will not vote for this.
Can I say something? Tony, you mentioned something that is not right. You mentioned the word recession. Do you realize that nobody in the White House have ever mentioned that?
Jose, Jose. We can't talk, we can't, we can't talk, we're grounded. Yeah, yeah, I'm not either. Yeah, I need to, is there?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have to echo exactly what David said to the regard that David and wholeheartedly the funds and the research that this company did for us, it's neat. And as the gentleman said, and well, we put that nine-one-one call in there, we want these fellows and the young ladies to be there in our assistance and we got to do what we got to do to fund that. And I personally think we've got the money to fund this. I learned a lot, I've been here for about six years, lived in six different budgets and Jeff, how many years? Five years when we do our assessments, right? So we've already been through this one time. But one thing I did learn this time, the, on this assessment research, we could do a better job as commissioners, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. I, I'm for one, this coming year, taking this increased number that our professionals have told us that we need and summarize that and put that into a yearly increase where this impact is not that great. But what I will say, and David Kraus, Kevin, and a little bit of research that I've just stumbled upon here in the last week mostly especially, in, in the last year, I cannot support this sending it to the taxpayers, even at a rate of fifty dollars per household when, in my opinion, us as government, we're not doing our job. I have thought, I've talked to Frank and it was totally on a, when I say Frank, the gentleman here that's head of waste group, he educated me on our garbage rates. Columbia County and state is a bunch of people in Columbia County not paying a fire assessment and no air trash assessment. And me personally, I'm willing to bite the butt, trim where we got to trim, but I'm, I'm not going to support fifty dollars because I want to put, I personally am going to take this bull by the horns, Mr. Wickens says. And we're going to put a program together and we're going to go find these. Me and Jeff Hampton sat in his office today talking about something totally different than this. But the conversation come back to this and we found seven parcels. No fire, no fire at all, zero fire. But, and most of them, I'm sorry, the minimum fire, sixty dollars a parcel, I guess, sixty dollars, I think it is. So, but zero trash in their trash can sitting in front of these houses today. So I support, we're going to find the money. I think there's plenty of money in this budget to where that whatever staff's going to do, Mr. Powell, to do some reappropriations, if you want to call it that. The money's there. My vote won't send fifty dollar increase to the taxpayers. Now, next year, after we do our research and it's going to take a while, this is a big issue that we got going on. It's very complex as far as the monies out there that I feel like the taxpayers are being deprived of. And when you can go down one street in my district and find six different places that are not paying their appropriate money in trash and fire, we got a problem. So I won't be supporting that at that point.
Point counterpoint with my fellow commissioners, but I keep hearing a healthy reserve is more than what we need. We asked our...
Commissioner, can I stop just, attorney, you stop. If there's no more public comment, I'll close the public hearing and then give Commissioner Williams the ability to speak. The public hearing's over, it's closed.
I wasn't going to get in a point counterpoint with my fellow commissioners, but I look at it a different way. I got history on my side and not saying that the whole commission is done. But there was a time, there was a, 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 an incident that happened many a years ago where I heard the same thing from commissioners. We got a healthy reserve and we shouldn't do this and we shouldn't do that. The board at that time on a three-two vote voted that anything over ten thousand dollars reoccurring could not, the only way it would be taken out of reserve would be a super majority. We have been fortunate in Columbia County to build up and make Columbia County one of the financial strong counties in the state of Florida. When the jeans and Francis or the Buggy Blue Fire or whatever comes, disaster comes to Columbia County, we hit the ground running just as soon as it's over. You know why? We got the money to pay for it. We don't have to do like these other counties, wait until the government sends us some money to fix your road back to help you with your house that had blown away. We have the ability to do it because we're financially sound. If we're going to strap our reserve when our auditor said, you'll deserve your reserve from right where they need to be to take care of Columbia County and her citizens. I was part of the board that initiated the special assessment for garbage, for street lighting districts. And it was a time that only the taxpayers, the Alborom taxpayers were paying to put and build for everybody in Columbia County. Less than forty-eight percent of the people in Columbia County were paying taxes. The other fifty-two percent wasn't paying anything. That's how, if I'm lying, save you alive, Ron Williams, you was there to it. Wasn't paying anything, fifty-two percent of the people in Columbia County wasn't paying a penny in Alborom taxes. But they were getting all the service that the other forty-eight percent was doing. And we initiated a special assessment for those things. Rescue used to be part of it and the Supreme Court ruled that we could not charge property on rescue, so rescue was eliminated from here. We build a, a system that where everybody pay for, why should I pay for, protect my neighbors' lives? He should take care of it, say. Why should I pay to dump my neighbor down to three college? He should take care of his son. That's why the assessment was set up with everybody contributing to the party. And then when you have to raise it a little bit, fifty dollars, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to go in our health reserves and do it and then when the storm comes, that health reserve is frontal. Where you don't have the money to take care of my citizens here in Columbia County. I'm, I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to reserve to do that. When everybody, I have to pay the same identical thing that everybody else has to pay. My neighbor has to pay the same identical thing, my kids have to pay the same identical thing, my uncles have to pay the same identical thing. Everybody pay the same identical thing. We have not had an increase in, in, in fire protection in five years. Five years. That's way too long. We keep milking it, keep milking it, keep milking it. And then I got a family that I'm asking do a new house and pay them twelve dollars, fifteen cents out to protect their life. Protect your property and put their lives at risk to do so. I'm not for going and reserve to do it, I'm for the fifty cent. I was for the eighty cent. The eighty dollars. I was for the eighty dollars because I know it's needed. I got people that live forty, twenty-three miles from Lexington, downtown Lexington. They don't have fire protection, they don't get any rate from the ISO. But before I have people in interest on, on, on the south end that live out in the ISO radius. But we want to complain about fifty cent, we do this whole community good, not just one or two, but everybody. I'm looking at what's best for Columbia County in the long run and not, and not to say raise it fifty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, I only point out in my discussions that we have healthy reserves to reflect the overall financial state of the county. I have never suggested that we pull, we fund this out of reserves. We do have record revenue year over year. We have more revenue, we take in more money every year than we spend. That's where I'm saying the money's there, the money's in this budget. I've never said use reserves to fund fire. I've pointed out we have healthy reserves. The reason we have healthy reserves is because we have that healthy revenue over expenses every year. That's what goes into that reserve to make that reserve so healthy. So I agree with Commissioner Williams, you don't use your reserves to fund this. But I guarantee you, I won't be sitting here next year, but at the end of next year, there's going to be millions of dollars rolled over from that last budget into the next budget. You're going to have capital projects that you had budgeted for that because of logistics, because of supply, because of inflation, because of everything going on, you're not going to be able to get through. You have got the money to take care of this, there is no reason to put this on the people in the middle of this economy in this recession. And just going to back to... I'm sorry, go ahead, Ron, go ahead, Ron.
David, how widespread problem is this that of the people is not being charged? I mean, I, I heard this in the last meeting and I'm, I'm hearing it this week.
It's something we've always worked to address. It's very, the amount of properties that turn over, the amount of new properties that get developed, it's hard to keep up with. I cannot give you an accurate assessment. We are going to get with Troy and try and figure out a better way. We used to employ a person by the name of Bob Bonsting. And he, that was his job, his job was to go out every day and try and find people that weren't paying trash assessments, find people that weren't paying garbage assessments and get them to pay the assessments. And he works very closely with the tax collector and property person. Since Bob retired, we've assigned it to Misa Williams, she's been working with the tax collector. But maybe we can use technology to come up with a better way. Maybe we can use technology to figure out of all of the parcels, which parcels are paying assessments, which parcels aren't paying assessments, take the ones that aren't paying assessments and go out and investigate those. Better ways to target and make that operation more efficient.
All right, my next question. You've already sent out trim notices and stuff this year, now the trim notices on the maximum, you all voted around eighty-six dollars.
I wanted to apologize to the gentleman over here, these letters that you get, we have no control over the work. Those are dictated to us, very confusing, don't... Those are dictated to us, very confusing, don't really say things in a very clear and concise fashion. And quite frankly, every time we send them out, which is every year, a lot of people call us and say, this doesn't make any sense. That is what we're dictated to have to do. Those are sent out by the tax collector. And again, it's not his fault, he's doing what the state says he has to send out. But you're right, we send out term notices based on the maximum amount that you could charge that year, which we did a preliminary rate assessment, set that. But the board then can reduce it, set a lower rate, which is what we're proposing tonight. Instead of the eighty dollars on a residential house, we reduce it to the board and we reduce it to fifty dollars on residential houses.
And my next question. Next year, if we do what the commissioner, Wood Murphy, say, and we find that there's quite a bit of revenue that we're missing out on, can we do that?
It depends on, every year you have the opportunity to set the assessment.
So if we finally find out we're having a lot of revenue that we're missing out on in assessments on garbage and fire, the people just not being assessed, can we roll this rate back?
Every year you have that option.
Every year, you need to revisit it every year. Not do like this five-year thing, it's just too much money all at one time. People, people, you know, they're sitting here looking at the fire station, all of a sudden it goes up eighty dollars and they're like thinking that was from last year to now, it's not, it's from five years ago. So I just think it's a bad plan to do every five years. If we don't pay our bills every five years and we shouldn't raise rates every five years.
So in listening to the board, when you brought that up earlier, when Lisa prepared and worked with the attorneys to prepare the resolution, you will notice that in the next set of paragraphs on the rates that we're proposing for this year, there's a set of rates that was the maximum rate that was adopted in the preliminary. So what we're saying now is those rates will stay out there and if the board ever needs to raise them up to that preliminary rate, every year they could back, come back and revisit. So both sets of rates are out there, the study will be usable for the next five years.
Yep. And for the record, Chair, I agree with every single syllable that Ron Williams spoke down there earlier. I agree with, we should not go into reserves for this because I personally believe the money is in the budget that we're trying to approve there. Now, that can be debated however, which way you wanna do it. But that's my whole thing because the money's going towards raises, towards the fire department, road department, everything, that is well deserved and they needed it before. We're taking a large step, when you reach out and talk to other commissioners throughout the state of Florida, that we have five years to fix this fifteen dollar an hour thing. But as Kevin stated many times in conversation with me and him and yourself, you know, it's hard to hire people today for that, you know, you're in competition, so to speak. And benefits ain't what they used to be, but practicality is. So again, just for the record, I wouldn't touch a penny worth of reserves. I personally feel like our staff is more than intelligent enough and Richard, they can go in there and pull and twist and move a couple of things and before you know it, they're gonna be a fun, exactly what we're asking. This is my opinion.
But David, David, how much money are we talking, fifty dollars? I mean, how much are we generating from this fifty dollars? I know we don't have, but I can remember the number.
This is the budget you're looking at funded? Total seven million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars. So if you reduce the assessment amount, we have to find another revenue source or another, or cut some other expenditure source to make up that difference. So the assessment, I believe in the study says it brings in seven million, four hundred thousand dollars. Realistically, you have to do your exemptions because there are a lot of people that get exempted, a lot of institutions. We don't charge the assessment on churches, we don't charge the assessment on individual people. So the assessment, I believe, if you look on the revenue page of the general, of the MSDU, I believe it generates seven point two million dollars, or seven point four million.
How much is that, is this fifty dollars?
Yeah, how much is the actual raise?
I believe, and I don't have that in front of me, but I believe the fifty dollars brings it up. I can get you an exact number, but I believe we were collecting previously almost six million dollars.
So about a million dollars.
Yep. Well, that's what it got, Ron, was it not, you had me?
Yes, five point nine million, I believe, is what we collected last year. I'll send your budget on the MSDU revenue page.
Uh, Mr. Chairman--
It's a million, not one point five, it's a million, million. Go ahead, Ron.
But David is also fair to say that we talk about all these people out here not paying, being on the not, uh, Everworm assessment board, we find both people overpaid and we found people not paying.
Again, that's why the revenue number that the study says is one thing, but you find a lot of adjustments and that number that you actually collect is less than what the study says you would collect if that's the rate you impose. Because you do find people who overpay, you find properties that are miscalculated, misclassified. You have people who are injured, they get exempted. You have churches, you have certain institutions like the school board, they don't get the assessment paid. And so you have to make those adjustments.
So basically, what we're talking about here, if this don't get approved, you need five million dollars.
This doesn't get approved, we will have to find a million dollars somewhere else in the budget, like cutting services or something. And that's the job you face?
I'm wondering where the money, I think y'all working on the budget, how many hundred hours or however much? And-- Did y'all look for, to make sure, to try not to, I'm positive you did, I'm kind of being facetious. But I mean, a million dollars, a million dollars, what are we gonna cut?
Realistically, the first place you'd look at is are any of the capital projects, the board's no longer interested in funding? That would be the first place you'd look.
Well, I'm not willing to sacrifice my capital projects. Then I'm doing my citizen, a wrong deal, waiting all these years for improvement on something, a road or something. It doesn't make sense. You can't go to the sheriff's budget and say, well, look at the sheriff, I'm not gonna give you as much, I gotta make a million dollars, so I'm gonna take two hundred thousand off of you. You can't do that, it's just not realistic to do that.
I'm just wondering, might be a commissioner know where this money might come from? Do any of the commissioners that are advocating this know where this money might come from?
Yeah, I do, I do, because it's like, it's like I said, sir, it's like I said earlier. You have got capital projects on the books right now. You, I doubt you will get through sixty percent of your capital projects next year because of supply chain, because of all these issues going on around here. You're gonna have roads that you wanna pay, that you're not gonna get paid, that money's allocated. You're gonna have a windfall surplus at the end of next year because you can't get through these capital projects. And that don't even count the money we save in the budget every year that's just hidden. And you know it's hidden because we, at the end of every year, millions of dollars come back through. Come, get turned into the next year, rolls over to the next year. So you've got revenues over expenses, the public don't care where you find the money. You can find a million money, a million dollars in that budget. You're gonna, you're gonna have much more than that just in projects you can't get through. And then you can come back next year and reassess this.
How much did they raise the assessment five years ago?
I don't remember what's significant because they added three fire stations and a bunch of personnel.
Well, my concern is-- We're raising, we're raising it on people that's paying and I'm concerned about some of the people that's not paying anything.
It's not that many, Ron.
It's not that many. When you sit on our top level assessment board, when there's one that they identified, come then, even when we had a full time man doing, it was both people paying too much and paying enough, not paying anything. They were paying on their whole assessment deal, on fire, all the assessments. And they had three dreddens on that property and they only had two. That's what you find.
Yeah, we sat on the board together, there's way more people that we saw paying more than there was paying less.
There was a lot of--
That people just don't show up, my son and my daughter, people don't show up.
That are ones paying too much, that's true, they're not gonna show up.
That's what I'm saying.
But there are--
I'm just saying, I saw a lot more than--
It's where, we always know how many they find. But, but I don't know of a resident in my district that not paying that Everworm turn, that not paying this--
Well, I don't either, but I haven't looked into it like, like they said, they're looking into it now. If that's the case, I mean, David, have y'all found something that's not, that should be paid?
We've always-- You get a situation where a property changes use and we don't know the property changes use and suddenly it's no longer a vacant land, it's no longer, they put a house on it, shed a mini on it. Now it's a residential unit, but they didn't get it furnished, so we don't know it's a residential unit. So they're still paying for the previous use of property in the lower assessment and they shouldn't be paying the residential assessment because now what was a vacant piece of land has a residential unit. So you're always going to be trying to catch up with how this property use change, how is it, how is it different? You're always gonna be finding some of them because we're growing.
And the other, that board, which is a million dollars of law money, we have made a commitment, we always-- We just talk about the money we have left over. We have started a utility company to pull the commission out. That million dollars will go a long way. The state of Florida, Governor Scott gave us roughly twelve million dollars for their sewer treatment land. That same sewer treatment today costs twenty-three thousand, twenty-three, twenty-eight meters. So we, we, we were trying to sell ourselves to, to, to bring industry into this county to give us jobs and build up other taxpayers. And we got to throw in our money somewhere, that million dollars will be a long, a long way into what we're trying to do. We're in the Ellisville area, we're in the Fort White area, we got to look at the whole picture and not skip a bit here and there. If we in, we in, if we ain't, let's get out and give it to the city.
I think, I think attorney wants to call, follow. Commissioners, listening to the debate that's going on, I just want to remind you that chapter one twenty-nine requires that the budget you approve be balanced. So if you cut this million in revenue, then the budget hearing that you're gonna have immediately thereafter, you're gonna need to, during the course of that hearing, find a million dollars. One twenty, the statute requires the budget to be balanced at all times. So I'm just, I'm hearing the debate and I understand exactly what the commissioners are saying, but that million dollars is gonna have to be identified this evening. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that so we can follow the statute.
Well, well, what-- Now, you're on top of a vote, a motion.
You making a motion?
Yes.
May I have a second?
Recommend motion, approve the final rate, annual rate, resolution number twenty, twenty-two R and S forty-nine for private check service is fifty dollars instead of the eighty dollars that were advertised.
I'm gonna second it, but I'm gonna make sure that we, if we have to hire my two positions to look at this problem. And if we find that this is a problem, uh--
Let me, let me-- And I'd like to add to my motion after further review of hiring someone to see if there's a lot of vacant, not a lot of homeowners out there that's not paying the assessment and we come up with that amount and we roll this back in next year's budget.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Myself and Commissioner Murphy voted no.
So the next thing is first public hearing to adopt the military rate from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, this will be-- Again, it's an open public hearing, tax authority, which you have the state tax authority, is Columbia County, county commissions. Maximum military rate is seven point eight one five zero, proposed military is seven point eight one five zero. The rollback rate, which is a rate the state makes you calculate, which is what's considered a revenue neutral rate, is seven point two four three zero. That means there will be an increase over the rollback rate, roughly seventy-nine percent. At this point, we're requesting you open it for public comment.
I wanna open, hereby open the public hearing for first hearing fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, adoption of military rate, seven point eight one five oh mils, and I have any public comment? Come on up, sir. You can ask a question, if you wanna come up, ma'am, you can after that.
In reference to my tax bill, the conversation hasn't started. Having changed numbers, I have no idea, but-- I don't make it short and sweet.
Oh, oh, give us your name and--
First name is Lewis, last name is Deanos.
Your address?
Three one six, southwest, three words, Maria, Marie, Glenn. We said he flowed out three two or two four?
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Okay, the last, I'm gonna close real quick. With the population increase, I went over to get a new tag. There was four people in line from out of state. The population increase, the liability for the, the community should go down instead of up. This requirement that you're imposing, I calculated a twenty-five percent increase. Now you're fixing to drop it down and I cannot do the calculations. So I would like to have the opportunity to register an opposition when I see the final numbers. Because right now, you're just doing a word salad. It means absolutely nothing to me.
Basically, what's gonna happen is your fire assessment from last year is gonna change from what it was last year. It's pulling up fifty bucks this year.
I understand. So my taxes from last year, and I have it in front of me, is twelve twenty-six. You add fifty bucks to that, comes out to twelve ninety-three. Divide that by four.
What's the four, I don't understand what you're dividing by four?
I'm dividing it by four because I wanna know what that increase is. It comes down to three hundred and twenty-three dollars for children, it's twenty-five percent.
You talking about total tax?
Now, I'm--
Total tax? You talking about total tax?
Yes, sir. Now, one last question.
But we are, we are, we are not debating that, we are on, on the military rate.
Well, my question is about the military rate, Chair. Let me ask you, is the school board proposing a one cent increase for new schools?
You don't know?
Well, that's what I read on the internet, which tells me more schools, more kids, more population. Population increase, liability should go down to me and everybody here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, thanks very much.
For clarification on this movement, what they're proposing is tearing down four elementary schools and building two new elementary.
That makes sense, okay.
And it's a half a cent sales tax that will be on your property tax.
It will not be on the property?
It will be on the property tax, it'll be on, it's a sales tax.
And it'll be, and it'll be--
A half a cent sales tax.
Well, that's good, thank you.
It'll be voted for, voted against.
And you'll have a chance--
You'll have a chance to vote it in or vote it out, it's not imposed by anyone.
So for clarification, military is the rate that we charge property taxes. We're proposing it to stay the same as it was last year. Now, your total tax bill consists not only of Columbia County, but if you live in the city, the city, school board, and any other special taxing districts that are out there, Swinney, Ward Management District. We have no control over the other taxing districts, but what we're proposing is this rate that we charge you based on your property value, it stays the same. You may take more taxes because your value of your property was. But we're saying the rate that we charged last year would be the rate that we charge this year, which was lower than the rate we charged two years ago. Does that help?
Okay, is there any more, anybody wanna come up here? Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
I'm just lost, Mr. Chairman. I sit and I come to these meetings often and it just disappoint me how my first amendment rights get infringed on when I come and speak. And Sylvester Warren, as some of you guys refer to me as activist and some of y'all refer to me as the community activist, but I see people yelling from-- But I see people yelling from, uh, uh, the audience. I see people going over their time. But you're so lenient, Chairman. You're so lenient. No, 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 no. You're so lenient when it comes to, when it comes to Mr. Warren. Right? You, you, you're all in your feelings, right? And you're crawling up a little bit behind about this and that. Uh, sit down, you're always debating with me. Hold on, I got, I got you, Mr. Sit up there and tell me. I know you want to cut me off. Yeah.
I'll give you the same I gave over.
No, 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 you ain't been giving it to me.
I'm not going to argue with Mr. Warren. I'm going to give you the same I gave everybody.
You ain't been giving it to me. I'm sitting back and watching. And everybody's starting to see we're watching how you treat people differently. You shouldn't discriminate. You took a post-uphold of the constitution and then that constitution was the first amendment. You swore to that. And you swore you would do it equally to everybody. No matter his race, no matter his ethnicity, no matter his background, his religion. Now I'm tired of sitting here watching it. And the way that y'all think y'all going to take anything to do, the time, the play is over, Mr. Commissioner. And y'all would do better about every citizen, no matter how you feel about him personally or indifferent. If you can't do better, then guess what? Excuse yourself. And then put somebody else there that can do better and can't treat everybody fairly. What your problem is as to how you discriminate against me versus other people, that needs to be looked into. And maybe we need to get my attorneys back on board to find out why I get treated differently. You think I won't do it, you already know I will.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I want to clarify.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind everybody, this is a public hearing on the military rate. On setting the.
Exactly. Okay, I gave that young man two minutes and 20 seconds. He was asked four or five questions. You stopped at two minutes, 20 seconds. Somebody right before that about, I want to clarify why somebody got a little extra time. Someone was up there and the alarm was not the regular alarm. I heard the phone go off. I did not know that was the alarm for two minutes. I asked a couple of commissioners. I looked at you, you said, oh, the phone was the alarm.
Yes, sir.
I immediately put, I, I, if, if you want to watch it again, I get on my phone and I, when two minutes is shown, I give 20 seconds. He got two minutes and 20 seconds and I tried to stick with that. Couple of people asked some questions of the commissioners. I watched that time and I made sure it's out. So I give two minutes and I try to keep it to 220, 230. And then I tell people, just like him, I told him in two minutes, 20 seconds. And I think I did it at two minutes, 30 on the other one because there were other people. So I, I don't discriminate against anybody. Anybody that wants to come up here can speak. Doesn't matter who they are or, or anything. So, um, Mr. Looker, do you have something to say? Come on up. Were we talking about the military? Are we talking about the military or you want to wait and do it at public comment at the end?
You have a public hearing is open, right?
No, no, we're speaking on the military.
Yes, it says.
Oh, yeah, the public hearing is open on the military. Yes, yes, yes. I thought you wanted to speak on something else. I didn't know what you wanted to talk about. Come on up.
We haven't seen you in so long, Stuart. Glad to see you finally make your way back down.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Maybe you could help me out because I'm a little confused. Uh, first of all, that should be three minutes. It's time you guys get this up to speed like every other civilized county in, in, in America. Not even, not even Florida anymore. You guys are in the dust. You passed a, the public voted on the charter amendment that all the money, the excess money gets rolled over into this year's budget. My question is, following up on what Commissioner Witt said, how much money got rolled over last year into this year's budget? So you could, uh, hold on a second.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
So, so here's the question.
Hold on. We're going to be, we're going to be cordial. Mr. Williams, can you just, let's, let's wait till he gets finished and then we can, we can answer his questions then.
Thank you. So you can reduce the military rate if you wanted to, because apparently you can have more revenue now because the assessments went up. So you also rolled over money from last year, which could be used to reduce the military rate. My question is, how much money got rolled over? Because that's cash money that is in this year's budget. That's not a trick question. You know, if I had a chance, I would have looked at the budget, probably could have seen it jump out right before my eye. But probably one of you five should be able to answer that. You're voting on the budget tonight. So how much money got rolled over? You put it into the, what fund does that put into?
Capital projects.
Into the capital projects. How much money got rolled over into the capital projects?
Mr. Kraus, will you come up and answer that? Are you through, are you through now?
Well, no, because.
Okay, finish and we'll answer the questions.
Because however much it is, to follow up on Commissioner Witt's and Commissioner Murphy's remarks, you can either reduce the military rate by some portion because of all the extra money that got rolled over, or you can reduce the fire assessment because of all that money that got rolled over. So far, you've done nothing. The public has not benefited one iota from the millions of dollars, which is millions, right? That got rolled over from last year's budget into this year's budget. And the fact that not one of you know, well, I bet Toby probably knows.
Okay, come on, let's start.
So whether you know how much money that is.
Two minutes and 25 seconds.
Is, uh, is, is just an outrage. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Kraus, do you want to answer?
You okay? I guess I'm ready. I don't know if I've got the slide for that.
If you don't have the slide, Mr. Kraus, you have, email it to him and let him see what the difference is.
I can do that. But if you look in the capital projects fund, you will see the transfers from all the other funds that we made into the capital projects fund. And roughly, we usually roll over about 3 million from previous years into current years.
But all that money is still budgeted as projects and didn't get done.
We put all that money in the capital improvements fund so that you could track it, see it, find it easy.
But you had a lot more than 3 million this year.
We moved a lot of money into the capital improvements fund. Uh, I, I thought I saw 11 million somewhere. 11 million is how much we moved from all the other funds. Now, all of that was rolled over from last year. Some of that was just money that was in reserves in excess of the minimum reserves or.
Reserves.
But yes, we took 11 million dollars of the other funds, put it in the capital projects fund to fund your capital projects.
And, and we all know that the capital projects fund is running way over because of the cost of asphalt building.
We got to come up with $7 million.
There's one in your capital projects fund that says $7 million for cost of.
And if, if you want to explain that real quick so people here can understand what that looks like.
Okay, so every year we appropriate money to do the large capital projects. Either road paving, building projects, putting lights at Richardson Community Centers, basketball courts, building bathrooms, building parks, building community centers. They're all capital projects. And then previously, these capital projects were spread all over the budget. So if you wanted to know what our capital projects was, you could never find them. So we said, we're going to make it easy for everybody. We're going to put it all in one fund. So all those monies that have been spread out over the years are now funneled into this one fund and it's about 11 million dollars. We have, because it's eight or nine million dollars of the grant funded projects, of which we know they will be under budgeted by 7 million dollars based on the cost increases in Aspen. So whenever we applied for these grants, we, we had the money for the project. We knew we had the money for the project. Hydrate Acres, Parnell Hills, where we're taking roads that are flooded, neighborhoods that flooded, putting in the stormwater and paving the roads. I think one, $6 million or $3 million from, Kevin might have the numbers in front of him. The cost of doing that is 35% more these days. So Kevin calculated it and he said, just the grant funded projects. To finish them, is going to need an 11 million dollar supplement. So we put 11 million dollars in the budget to supplement the grant funding. There are capital projects that aren't grant funded, they're county funded. Those are in that project list as well. I'm going to get into the budget, uh, we can go over these.
And, and put it in lame's terms, and I think Mr. Kirby can, put it in lame's terms for the, the 21 million.
Yes, sir. I echo what Mr. Kraus said. We have been very fortunate through grant funded projects to come from sources outside of Columbia County's tax base. Because of whatever this world we're living in, those projects have never had to be shored up financially by our local funding sources. Those on the books equate to roughly 21 million dollars to pay. In the civil, the road construction has went up a minimum of 35% to the last calendar year. So 7 million dollars of that 11 million are scheduled to show up grant funded projects. So that leaves you 4 million dollars, what Mr. Kraus referred to as capital projects. So when you see your community center getting built, your county road getting paved, your bathrooms being built, those things of that nature, as he indicated, now they're transparent in one fund. So when I heard a comment that the taxpayers are not getting one iota, if you're willing to walk away with 21 million dollars of outsourced money, by not shoring it up, you're losing 21 million dollars. If you're, won't have your road resurfaced, you're never paying the version of the county funds. That's where that money is. It's capital projects outside of your operating budget. Now, what Derek Vane, the commissioner said, how do you fund that? But that's where, that's where the money is, very transparent at this point.
In other words, my turn, they gave us 21 million to spend and we got to come up and set what?
Officially, 7.
7 million, just to keep that free money. So it, it's a year that is unprecedented, really. Has that ever happened?
Never.
So, so we're dealing with a year with the economy national, that, that's a whole different year this year. But, uh. Yeah. Does any, anybody else have anything to say about the military rate?
And with the budget, everything is a choice.
If, if, um, I'm going to hereby close, close the public hearing.
I make a motion to set the military rate at 7.815.
Second. I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion passing.
So now we're actually into the budget. So the military rate was a preliminary adoption of the military rate. There will be a second hearing on it on the Tuesday, the 20th. So if you'd like to come to the second hearing. And we Tuesday, the 20th, 5:30 right here with the budget. One of the things we did is we did, again, we've talked about it, for $3 an hour adjustment for all county employees and will satisfy 2020's Florida Amendment Number Two to the state constitution. So yes, we had several years to do it, but by dragging it out, we're not staying competitive with the marketplace. So the board gave us the direction to go ahead and just get the $15 minimum wage satisfied. So that's what we did. We did $2 an hour last year. This year we're doing $3. In doing that, we also had several requests for new positions. Two of them, the utility technician and the inmate crew leader, which is actually three, in the rideaway maintenance department, were asking the board to include in the budget and approve those positions. Uh, the utility technician is because we went from having personally no people in the utility to trying to get staff so we can maintain an ever growing utility now that we've added the town of Fort White. We had two employees in the utility. Adding this position will bring us on to only four employees in the whole utility. Uh, the inmate crew, um, leaders. Uh, if you paid attention to the board, we've been talking about mowing for a long time. And one of the problems we had was we lost the inmate crews. Well, we can get the inmate crews back, but to get the inmate crews back, we have to have somebody on staff who can supervise them. So they're asking the rideaway department for three inmate crew leaders to recommend that in the budget, included in the budget is those positions. Not in the budget. People requested an administrative secretary in the BOCC. He said that was not recommended. Maintenance technician three and one in the facilities maintenance department were not recommended. Dispatch requested four trainees that they would need if dispatch gets consolidated with the city. That's an if. So we did not recommend it because until it's not an if, there's no point in telling your people. Um, athletic supervisor in recreation, we did not recommend. Secretary run part-time in the extension, we did not recommend. And 4H program assistant, she did not recommend. In addition, the budget contains a change from the, uh, parks office of 33,453 to reflect, he had budgeted 3% instead of $3 per hour. So he wanted to amend his budget to reflect that. That is now included in the floor. So having said that, all this talk about revenues and stuff, these are pretty much our major revenues. And as you can see, if you go down to the last column at the very bottom, our major revenues increased 5.6 million dollars. And I think in one of the budget work sessions, we talked about where that went. A million, three of it went to the sheriff's office. Couple million went to salaries. We had increases in fuel and several other major expenses that hit us. That pretty much ate up that 5.6 million new revenues. That is the new revenues as calculated from the property appraisers, um, assessment. So what's that mean for the general fund? The general fund is what most people think of when they think of the government. We actually have a bunch of funds. And different departments are in different funds, which means they have different revenue sources. But usually when you think about general government, you think about the general fund. These are the departments that funded in the general fund. It actually went down this year to 55,768,446. The reason it went down is we took those capital projects out of the general fund that were like recreation related or facilities, maintenance, building related, and we put it in the capital projects. Because if you needed to know that some building needed a new roof, you wouldn't know where to look for it. It would be buried in the general fund's facility maintenance section. Now, if you want to know about the new roof, you can go to the capital projects fund and it will be there. So that's the major difference between the general fund then and now and why it went down 5 million dollars. So, like in summary, these are all of the funds the county operates on. Again, and this is what they were last year, which is what they're going, what we're proposing them to be next year in this floor budget. Transportation trust fund, which is primarily your public works, uh, right of ways, maintenance, stormwater, all those sorts of fun stuff. It's going up from 16 million to 21 million. Municipal services unit, that is your fire department. That is some of your landfill people. That is your building and zoning and code enforcement folks. So that budget is changing and going from 16 million to 19 million. Court services, we have to support the courts. So it's a given. That's a given. Uh, landfill, again, it went up. Um, we can talk about later if anybody has any questions on it. The library went up just a little bit. Uh, it's based on funding from the state, a library enhancement fund and other state funding. So that's its primary source of funding. Special law enforcement, uh, tourist development. Tourist development is primarily funded through bed tax, through the taxes on the hotels, the tourists, um, and that sort of thing. So it went up because of bed tax. Um, now I'll try and speak through this. I apologize for going too long. Ship is a ship program. Economic development went up because of capital projects that we were moving out. You have to reflect that expenditure moving out. Um, utilities, again, it went up because now we're actually recording the entire cost of the utilities and trying to report what would cost to pay for those utilities. Community development block grants, block grant we have for housing, paving assessment, these are those assessments that you saw earlier that were approved for paving projects. And my insurgency, that is the money that we set aside every year, $3 million every year to pave the roads. So if you want to know where your paving money goes, it's in a separate fund we can track. Uh, county project, after that is the capital projects, which is the projects we talked about. As you can see, 33 million, 33.8 million dollars is a lot of capital projects. We have a lot of capital projects. There's a lot of things. Jail construction is reduced because the jails constructed. Now we're trying to close out the fund. Uh, road improvement debt is just road improvement debt. The old debt is just debt service payments on money that we borrowed previously. And then finally, the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, the money the federal government gave us. We are budgeting $6 million, $6 million, $9 million, that is what is left in, uh, the lead, the general fund that we're going to transfer to, or in the ARPA fund that we're going to transfer to the utility fund and use on some of these large utility capital projects, like running the water line in Fort White, like building a sewer plant at the North Florida Mega Industrial. So every fund, the utility fund has its own capital projects so that they can kind of track them as a utility expense. So those are all our funds, um, at this point. Uh, it is an open public hearing. The taxing authority, again, for the record, is the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners. And we would like to request the board to open it for public comment.
Okay, I hereby open this for public hearing, um, for the adoption of fiscal year 2022, 23 budget. Does anybody have any comments? Come on down. Come on down.
Uh, question. At Megaplex, every time I drive by there, there's nothing there. Why are we putting sewer in there if nobody's occupying it?
Well, you got, cause you gotta have somewhere for them to use restroom before they get there. Cause if you don't, you wait for them to get there, they, it's like not putting a second tank in before, you know what I mean? Just answering a question.
Yeah, but your back was. You know, if I get a contract to give you donuts and you have to pay me, right? When you pay me, I give you the donuts. When they give you a contract and you promise them of a sewer plant, when they give you that contract, there's early money, down payment, there's a schedule of payments, there's a promise or a note, there's something going up in there, a warehouse, you got a railroad spur. Those people that are interested will come to you, provided you tell them what you're going to do for them, but you don't have to spend my money. That's reckless use of my money. Thank you.
So the reason, the reason that you put utilities at the site prior to businesses going out there are that site is competing with hundreds of other sites across the nation for these companies. And these companies aren't going to come unless the site's ready. So we get roughly forty looks a year now at that place and, and, and the reason we're starting to gain traction and get that many looks and we came close, you know, we had, we had two close calls with almost any companies out there. And I do believe in the next five years, you're going to see something go out there. It's a matter of time. It's because we're so close to being site ready, we're not there yet, but we're so close to being site ready because we stepped on a limit and put utilities out there. They're not going to come to a dry site. And, uh, local tax money has not been spent out there yet. The money that's been spent out there so far has come from the governor's office, from various grants, because the governor's office believes in that site and believes in the future of that site. So, but if you don't already have it ready for a company to come, you're going to lose because you're, you're literally competing with hundreds of other sites that are just like.
Now, how long has that, how long has that project been?
It's, it's, it's what, twenty years old now, isn't it? But the, the, the deal is in the last four to five years, you finally got the grants and the funding to be able to say it's now site ready.
It's a process it takes for a long time. It's not a quick thing.
Right now, we are, we're getting a, like guaranteed maximum price for the treatment plan out. We've hired a company that's, who value any day. We just approved them at the last meeting. And, uh, like I say, you will, you'll see some construction start out there. We've got a grant for the road going in under the paving route. So, but most of what we spent out is the water being banned. And everybody we put out is the water being banned.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We got, we got to move on.
I was going to ask one more question.
Okay.
That economic development, uh, numbers, can you break that down as to what economic development needs?
Return this fund?
Just five million dollars on it.
All right, the economic development fund, basically the majority of that money, we have two millions reserved for, uh, future, um, tax debates for the gateway crossing and those types of projects. We have, um, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars set aside for reserves or incentives for future projects. We have basically six hundred and fifty thousand for capital, uh, investments. Uh, we took six hundred thousand dollars, we transferred it to the utility fund for capital projects to help develop utilities. Uh, personal services is only two hundred and twenty-five thousand and, uh, other current expenses is three hundred and six thousand, five hundred. And that would be page twenty-five of your budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The wrong in the overall outlook of this budget, that that increase in the fire assessment is there on my favor of this budget. I have a question, because now I just ran out of all the millions. I mean, this is not as transparent as you guys make it out to be. I'm sure everybody here agrees with that. And my commissioner is not in favor of giving fifty dollars back to his constituents for some kind of political stuff we're going to look into with the next year. Doesn't help next year. No, it doesn't help people that are on, on the, on the, on the edge, they can't make the money, they don't make the big salaries and the big pensions like some of us here or millionaires like other people are just hardworking folks that make a lot of money. So I'm not in favor of that. But I have a question for the county attorney, because I don't know the answer to this. I hate to answer questions I don't know the answer to. But the fire assessment, because I want my county commissioners to think about this and the other ones that voted against giving that fifty dollars back to the public, to the people that pay their, pay their freight, is to reconsider the fire assessment. Can that be done at the next meeting? Or is it by statute that that fire assessment, and if you don't know, you can just tell me, that that fire assessment is mandatory that it be passed tonight and cannot be recalled at the next meeting because the budget processes are going on?
Generally speaking, our laryngitis, motions for reconsideration need to be made at the same meeting by one of the prevailing voters, uh, on the motion to pass. So if they can reconsider during the course of the meeting.
Right.
They can call for a motion for reconsideration of any board action. Uh, now it was in the scope of a public hearing, so we might, it was in a public hearing.
That's two minutes.
So we might have to reconvene the public hearing. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Stop tracking.
I get it. I agree with you.
But in terms of the timing for the assessment to be decided, you're up against the wall because we're in the middle of budget hearings. And the assessment, the revenue from the assessment, as well as the expenditure from the assessment is in the budget and the budget has to be balanced. So you have to know what you're anticipating to come in and what you're anticipating to go out. So my point, when I brought it up during debate, if you do reduce revenue by not doing the fifty dollar increase, a million dollars in reduced revenue, then on the other side of the budget to bring it in balance, you have to find a million dollars of expenditures to take out. And that was when the suggestion was made by our commissioner, Whit, about capital projects. You just have to do that during this budget hearing process because the statute requires any budget that's adopted by this board must be balanced.
Right, but the budget hearing goes on again, there's a second budget hearing.
That's right.
So, and it's an assessment, it's not a tax.
Thank you, Mr. Loper.
So, so as long as they move the money around, it don't change the budget, then they can do that. They can actually do that at the next meeting, couldn't they?
Mr. Loper, we're going to answer your questions, but that's about.
So what the board voted on tonight was the final vote on the assessments, so we can set the final budget.
Right.
And to be clear.
Tonight was the decision on the assessment.
And, and to be fair, Mr. Loper's question was how could they reconsider it? And it would be tonight. And it would need to be tonight.
And to be clear, what I was talking about was next year, we can reevaluate this budget. Next year, if we can lower it, if we find that money not being charged to people where it should be, or if we find a substantial amount of it not being collectible.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the budget? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the recommended motion is that the tenet budget has amended at twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget. That motion needed, David?
Yes.
What, what amendment was it?
How does any budget has amended twenty twenty-three?
Okay, I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
The second motion we would request the board to consider is to honor the creation of one utility technician and three inmate crew leader positions.
I move. So a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
So now it's Kevin's turn.
Hey, I'm, I'm going to break in Sebastian Green. We can do this, uh, red proclamation fraternity unit, not Mr. Chair. I've already read it. Do you, you want me to read it again or you want to just go ahead and get it? Let's, let's get it, group. Get it.
We've already read the proclamation and all, but you're here.
Tell Ben Skip to check that safety valve. You need to tell Ben Skip.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes, sir.
The resolution for safe treatment. You're going to do that. That's okay.
And now it's Mr. Kirby's turn.
All right, Mr. Kirby.
Oh, no, it's Joel's turn. I'm sorry.
Joe. Oh, yeah. Do I have a motion for approval? Send it in. Send it in. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead and move.
My God, he's done again.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, uh, I know, it's from the Gator game. I'm sorry. The, uh, I'm going to speak a little louder here. The, uh, the town of Fort White has requested through staff, uh, to, uh, participate with the county on the county's, uh, solid waste pickup contract with Waste Pro. Um, and we've negotiated at staff level with Waste Pro for the inclusion of the town of Fort White, the territorial limits of the town of Fort White under our contract. So what you have is an amendment that's been approved by Waste Pro, um, to allow for that modification of our contract. After the modification is approved, if it's approved, at that point, Waste Pro will, uh, terminate its contract with the town of Fort White. Um, and then any, uh, franchise fees and assessment and collection from the citizens of the town of Fort White will flow from the county through the town. Um, so this is hopefully going to clean things up for the town a little bit. Uh, they still have an opportunity to generate, generate a little bit of revenue for the town, uh, but it streamlines things for, um, them as well as for, um, I believe Waste Pro, Frank can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, in terms of allowing them to just run that service area, uh, uniform with the county. So we're recommending approval of the, uh, proposed amendment.
I will not make a motion that, uh, that we approve a resolution with contract Waste Pro.
Flair, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Um, I have six items for consideration, including our welcome item. First item, before we get started, I would like to be requesting a vote tonight, and I did want to break this court up to date on where we're at with the contract mowing and literal removal. So to kind of capture a history lesson, we have multiple contracts, but the problem about it was what we call our big back wing mowing. I think everybody in this room is aware of that. We are significantly behind. We have tried everything inclusive of going from traditional mowing to single pass mowing for safety purposes, and we have tried a little bit of both. I've also learned a lot during this process here. What I would like to commit before we get into the details of where we're at is we have overcomplicated this contract, and I'll explain. We react when people get mad about wildflowers. We react when somebody says it's a little wet, it leaves ruts. We react when it's too dry or it's frostbitten, and we're, we're constantly modifying this contract. I would like to speak a different direction. The intent, in my opinion, and I was off route and read it several years ago, was to mow this county four times in thirty-eight day cycles, excluding weekends, holidays and rainy days, starting roughly April one. Through the years, including myself, and I'll take all the blame, I've reacted to the public, well, we got wildflowers. Okay, let's, let's skip over that. Then everybody forgets about it when it's that high because we skipped over. I've reacted, well, the frost hits, so on this end of the county, and once you're out of here, let's move around. So forth and so on. We added the landfill and basketball, large slopes for a lot there. So when we say thirty-eight days, then we take a break in the middle and we go, we mow the slopes and we mow landfill. So then it turns into sixty days. But that is as complicated as a Philadelphia owner can't figure all that out. So what I would like, the only thing I would like, my vote, is if anybody disagrees, however we go with this, you know, let's treat the slopes, basketball, large, landfill separate. Let's start mowing this upcoming year, first Monday, closest to April first, whether it's raining, whether it's cold or hot. Sir, wildflower, let's move. Okay? I think that's going to take care of ninety-eight percent of your problem, assuming we get no contractors. So that's what we're going to talk about. Okay. So during the R and P process, we reserve according to section five of evaluation criteria paragraph one B. Basically, we reserve the right amount across all presentations. So you'll see on the screen, you have six responsive bidders. Now, here's your challenge. Your first two are on top of each other, then you have a three hundred percent increase. Now, our first man up there, he's what prompted us to completely open it. But he come in a little bit. Next, creative concepts, they're right on top of them, and then you jump up about three hundred percent. Okay? We try to get creative. Let's bust a county that has using two forty-two as a boundary, full north, full south, and you got single and single. Contractors really didn't pay attention. They, they set the single in Port Look, Nickel, Playa's Hard, and mowed the right way, port right way. Mr. Williams, you got to waste there, buddy. That, that takes that off the table. Okay? But at the end of the day, the snow has organized, uh, in-person meeting. We want to get our ideas of how did you get here? How did you get here with your bags? Right? We don't want to ever get in the situation we're in today. The RFE allows you flexibility to do not do baseline behavior. You know, let's take everything into consideration. So that booth says I can vote for sixty-six thousand dollars per cycle. And next guy's seventy-two, they kind of change all process. Next guy's one ninety-four, one ninety-eight, two twenty-one. That's why that criteria is in there saying, guys, kind of draw, come up with that. And that way we can make a reasonable recommendation to come back to front of this. But at the end of the day, special project, which what I refer to as landfill and slopes and basketball, that's a separate racket, gentlemen. That way, next year, we'll creep our way through this year, whatever we have to do. Starting next year, and I give you all the commitment, we are going to do this right, whatever right is, but we don't want to ever do here. That is a rough thing. We did all that, so we've done our part. The bids come in all over the place so far. We want to interview our potential contractors, and the next meeting will come back with a recommendation. Okay?
We have a lot of, we have a lot of good week.
Yes, sir. We're going to meet Tuesday. Tuesday of this upcoming week, we're going to meet, and we're going to agenda the following Thursday, two days later, before the following meeting. Yes, sir.
Don't cut yourself short, because like you said, we're going to get through this year, part of the activities.
Well, sir, I'll, I'll just go and say it, and I can always speak for Kevin Kirk. I'm just one guy on the committee. I think we're in a big, big crossroads. Three hundred percent price difference. We said we want to work with contractors on the payroll, that way we never get in trouble The low pants, the guy that got us here to do this, you got a guy on top of him, and you got three hundred percent. The low pants, the guy that got us here to do this, you got a guy on top of him, and he got three hundred percent. So it's going to be a big challenge, but that's why we want to take that step, come back from this. Okay, I'm sure you need questions.
Hello, Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I don't know if this is the time for that, but the, uh, apparent, apparent low proposer here is pretty much the one that's got us to the point we're at.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and for all the issues that I personally, not speaking for none of the commissioners, because every single one of us has got a story. And I, I, I'll just have to, uh, reiterate what Mr. Williams said one time, people here for forty-seven years, they've never been against a mess like this. In this proposal, I personally, if Joe directs me through this, I make the recommendation or motion or whatever, if this is the proper time, to not even accept this proposal.
I, I think where it's at, the processor, the committee has it right now, so let them bring that to you, but this board will have the discretion. If that's the recommendation of the committee, you'll have the discretion to decide that you don't view that as being responsible. To do it right now, I understand your, your thought process, Commissioner, but I think procedurally it would be out of order. Well, I, I. They're hearing you loud and clear, but they can finish it right.
And, and I appreciate that, Joe, but just for the record, for a lot of these constituents that's in this room tonight, that's not normally in this room, call and ask all the questions that you may. This is what's gotten us to this point. It is a big number, but as I've said for the last four years, you don't get the big number. We've never had this big number as a proposal or a bid because nobody would bid it because if you're sitting here, you got a contractor that's charging what they charged back in the nineties. Who, who would want to go down that road and bid that? This is a perfect example, uh, and I'm guilty of it. I'm not going to push this on anybody else. I, I have voted for a low bid, but I will not, as Commissioner, go through what we've been going through this year. This is ridiculous. And when you look at Marion County and you look at some of the other counties that are not going down the road of troubles that we have, and you look at these bottom numbers, they're kind of lying. And, uh, but Kevin put the icing on the cake when he did it, and I, I, Kevin put a lot of effort into this thing, me and him have had a hundred conversations about this. But when you look, and I know Columbia County never do, I want to live to see Columbia County and Duval County, but when you compare the miles to miles, and they're spending fifteen million, and we've got in our budget that we just tentatively passed, it's budgeted to cover this right here, and the problem goes away. So I'll just say, constituents, if you have any more questions, uh, if I can help you clarify any of your questions, my phone number is public as it gets. But, uh, that, that's, uh, just going into it, I, I appreciate what you're doing, uh, I, I hope you don't run the, uh, the Cowboys off, so to speak, you know, but the, uh, I, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not going away from getting this year, that's true. If so, we going into mowing business.
Commissioner, just to, to help you, you said we worried about running off the higher bidders, and I hear what you're saying. It might be through the interview process that they actually figure out, these low bidders, figure out why they're so low. And maybe they're, maybe they're underbidding themselves and putting themselves in a bad situation. So the interview process is going to be very well-rounded, um, to try to figure out what it really costs.
Well, in the end, I'll go on record, again, because there's public here that's not only in this meeting. But a particular contractor lost me whenever he told Mr. Kirby and one of our directors that DOT comes first and, uh, you, you lost me. That's another reason why, you know, the proposal, in my opinion, shouldn't even be on the speech paper. But, uh, uh, so, and then, uh, and I'm not sitting here advocating for any particular person, I'm just saying it's time we got to bite the bullet and do what's right for constituents, because Mr. Williams said, uh, and I agree with Ron a hundred percent. Uh, this county, the, uh, current and most especially past commissioners have built such a, a, a level of service that the constituents, they, they, they request it and they deserve it.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams. Uh, Mr. Kirby, what really sticks out to me is, uh, the first two is in a league to themselves. And then your, your, your crews, your GLC, and then Field Park are all in a league together. I mean, that's something that, to me, you look like you got two low boulders, and then you got three about consistently about the same. There's a lot of difference between sixty-five thousand, seventy-two thousand, down to a hundred ninety-three thousand, two twenty-one thousand, a hundred ninety-eight thousand, for the same work.
So Commissioner Williams, to echo you and Commissioner Murphy, reiterate, we did a twelve-county study. Duval County is twenty-four hundred square miles, or eight hundred square miles, or one-third of Duval County in size compared to Vermont. They're fifteen million dollars. A third of fifteen million dollars, five million dollars, right? So that stuck in my mind, you know? Now, can we afford five million dollars to mow grass? No, we cannot. But there's somewhere a level of service in there to be considered. So I completely agree with what both of you guys said. I've been in work a long time. If you have that kind of a gap, somebody's thought process is different than the others'. And that is the purpose of the exercise, is to sit down, what is your thought process? You're going to put two mowers out there, you're going to do this thirty-eight days with exception of weekends, holidays, and rain days, and the first time you don't, we're going to get mad at you, go to the next guy, you understand that. And maybe they're going to say, we absolutely understand, or they're going to say, wait a minute now, I didn't expect that level requirement. But then there's your answer, because we all knew either somebody's losing money or somebody's making too much money with Trucent Hill somewhere.
Well, I don't think we've been holding our first contractor to the standards of the contract, because we were getting such a good point. And I think he's accustomed to that, and, and I think if you pay what it's worth, you could, you could hold the contractor to.
That's right.
Commissioner Ford, as Commissioner Murphy indicated, something blew him away, when, when I got blown away was when I was told that this contract is not delinquent. And that, that, that knocked me over with a feather. And then I heard all the reasoning about, you know, why it was not delinquent, and that's why I opened up with comments, I opened up, we have made this too complicated. We've got to get back, and the man that mows out of there late has for twenty-five years, he said, I don't ask any questions, first I'll score a hole, and I send handles. And you never hear about how they're going to take they got. Twenty-five years, every time he did it, that same man's got it, but you never hear nobody fussing about it, and it hit me, that's what we need to do right here.
I agree.
Okay? Okay, Mr. Chair?
Great work, get ready for the mowing stuff.
Okay. Second item is bid number two zero one nine eight disposal waste tires. So basically, we have two of those tires in the landfill. This is where we live in, we had a sole source, a sole source provider, they said, look, with the feudal labor of this and that, we have to go up, it's a reasonable going up, recommend a motion, approve amendment of this contract as protested.
Second, we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Okay, okay. All opposed, all opposed, motion passes. I've worshiped that best you can.
Hey, y'all, sir. Okay, so next item is barbit. So I was requesting, uh, of the commission, look in the, fly, or our barbit requirement is so stringent, as well, I'm not sure. Our only ours required a minimum of three hundred foot setback from all adjacent property points. If your property here, minimum three hundred foot, if you even consider out of bar of pit. So we took a look at what everybody else was doing. On the slide, you see it. You got hundred foot, fifty foot, twenty foot, ten foot, or three hundred. You don't see the old fifty foot, five hundred left fifty foot, Jackson, six hundred sixty foot. Fayette had the same thought process, we did fifty, seventy-five, hundred, hundred, hundred foot of dwelling. So there's your answer, okay? So we're at three hundred foot, everybody knows that it takes a little dirt to build anything from a shopping mall to a house, right? Dirt, if you hear contractors talk here in Columbia County, the reason dirt's higher than ever helps is because if you have forty acres, it says an L-shaped piece of property, right? By the time you do three hundred foot setbacks, you might only dig ten, well, that's below forty. So dirt around here historically, it always varies, I always said eight foot is going to be, right? That generates thirteen thousand five hundred cubic yards per acre, right? So a person that's in risk of putting barbit in, he's going to say, okay, I got to pay five thousand dollars an acre for the dirt to buy it. You take that into the equation, if you're selling the dirt for two or three dollars a cubic yard to your contractors, you take that into the equation. Well, if you can dig twenty-five or thirty-two acres in lieu of ten or fifteen acres, there you go, you can make it work. So I was asked to bring this update on, if you were to ask Kevin Kirby, I think it's all where you're at, right? And I think it's a lot of common sense goes with it. If you're in the backside of the subdivision, you know, we have rules, our only ours, it's just going to finish the slopes, you know, three to one, six to ones, so it's just not a drop off. I think that's the main goal. I just think the setback's got a little too heavy. We have the public's intention of consideration.
And everyone, I'm, I'm, I'm in this business. I mean, I, I probably remember more about it than I can. But, you know, here's the thing, like you said, you can't drop off. So if you do five to one slope, but you go eight foot, you're already going to be fifty, seventy-five foot setback from the property line. Now, I think you, the five to one slope should be required all the time, but your setback should be resident. You know, right now, our code says if you're, if you got a residence on a twenty-eight acre acreage, the house might be a thousand foot from the property line, but you still have to be three hundred foot from that neighborhood property line. And like you said, I mean, I know people who's got forty acres, can dig seven acres on a forty acre, they call it a setback. Uh, and, and you know, we had several, uh, contractors wrote letters to us, wanted us to, uh, look at this.
Yes.
You know, I, I see one of your motions is, uh, please advise how you want to proceed. I would proceed with a five to one slope from the property line mandatory, and maybe a hundred fifty foot from a residence.
Commissioner Ford, uh, county attorney, uh, I'm not discussing with you, but this will be a landfill regulation revision, right, revision? Correct. So I guess what I'm hearing tonight is I need some direction from the board so we can revise LDR, right? So I'm hearing the general consensus of the board is five to one on the slopes upon completion and whatever y'all tell us. From dwelling or property line fifty, dwelling or property line?
Dwelling.
Dwelling?
That's my thing, dwelling.
St. John's is a hundred foot from adjacent dwelling, that's the way they do it, y'all want to go one fifty from dwelling?
I, I would say dwelling from property line, because if a person wants to build a house close on their property, they got this big old hole sitting there. But if you come a hundred fifty feet from the property line, that takes, catches off everybody.
But that's three hundred foot on operate, I mean, if you do operate, you got three hundred foot.
Well, it looks like you got now, you got a thousand foot.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, that's.
You could cut it down to three hundred feet from a thousand.
I would think you have to do property line and residence, don't you?
Yeah, it got to be my problem.
Well, you're going to have a five to one slope on the wall.
Yeah, right. That takes something outside.
Forty, forty, five, five to one slope, I'm going to tell you about that first.
You can, you can do it on.
What's your recommendation, Mr. Kirby?
I, I think the slopes are very important. That's what everybody does not like to see the canyon out there. If you go into a dozer and scrape it up, it's not a big deal. You go in there and put the, I like, I even like the six one slope for me. Go get it one. You know, that would be forty-eight foot in, at eight foot depth, be fifty foot, right? That gives you a six one slope, okay? So if you do that, that would give you fifty foot, then if you do the one hundred, the Commissioner Ford's recommended, Mr. Williams, that will put you a hundred and fifty foot minimum from the property line to the bottom of the pond.
But the digging is started at a hundred.
If you go that route, a minimum of a six one, uh, slope, everybody's going to dig a bit of eight foot, six times eight, forty-eight, that gives you forty-eight foot of that. So if you got a hundred, that would be, put you a minimum of a hundred and forty-eight foot fence line of property line where the pond will come flat.
That's what, I would not, I, I would not, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, because, you know, dirt's going to become a commodity, what I just paid for.
And, and if you look at this list of county, you know, the ones that has the long, the big setbacks, I mean, they're very unmarketable, they have a lot of. Columbia County don't have that anymore. And I would also say that if you look at the fence in Columbia County down, the bar pit, most of them don't meet the, the problems we have now.
That's going to be my, my, my next comment. You try to go bar bit down, you don't, you don't have the five to one slope, or five to three, or five to six slope. We're going, who's going, if we move this closer to the property line, who's going to regulate and make sure they're following the guidelines?
So Commissioner Williams, follow that up, because I have to, there's reasons to, they have to put a ball in there, right? And then to receive their ball back, they have to do slopes for what, they have to scrape it up. They close it up, like I just went and added two of them to reach good and release the ball back.
All right, one other thing, are we, are we waiting until they, they excavate all the dirt out over Friday or two, to, uh, uh, meet the guidelines? Or a certain percentage of the acreage already dug, that percentage keeps up with the, with the, with, with the slope prepared also?
Way it works today, based on the acres, based on this map, they provide, they put up a pond. That pond is not released back to them till all of that is done. If you want to do differently than that, that's what we're hearing that, and it can be done many ways. If you complete the north side of the pond, for example, prior to going to the east side, whichever way you're traveling, you can, that's what we're doing here tonight, let's establish the criteria of modern nature. So there's all kinds of.
I would say, my question is, are we waiting till, till one hundred percent completion of the digging in the bar pit before we, they have to do the south? Or they do the slopes that they dig? If I saw on the south side of, of, of my bar pit, and I get halfway through, the slope should be going on that south end.
That's, and after that's what you do.
So, so it was starting out, what, what they say is starting out with a slope, you'd start out with a slope.
And, and Commissioner Ford, I, I agree with both of y'all. If I would do in the job, I would do it as I went, because I went on river, plowed. And that answers your question, Commissioner Williams, there's reasons a couple weeks ago, they dug both pits out, then they come back and dress them up at the end, to get bonded. That's what we're doing here tonight, we can kind of create whatever we want.
Are, uh, are they dressing out, closing out the bar pit, or they having to seed as much as possible?
Not today, sir.
Well, we'll keep, you know, running from having, something like, so my neighbor Al's now.
If we make it in a six to one.
I agree with Ron, i- if you're going to do the bar pit, wouldn't you have to have the slope in there to guarantee no erosion? Before you dig it all out, you know, for however long it takes to dig the bar pit, you would think you'd have to have the slope in there, and like Mr. Kirby said, you'd have to be, it wouldn't be right to go in there and dig it straight down for four months while you're working, then have to move dirt back in there, you know? It seems like it'd be a little more stable if you use a dirt that was there anyhow, so is that, is that what we're trying to get to?
Most of the time what you do is you move it where you, where you slope, and you start digging there.
Right, right.
And it's about going straight down there, but when you get through digging, you.
You dress it down, I understand.
And you should use that dirt to make.
That dirt you made, Joe, yeah, yeah, okay. As long as you can do that, I, I don't see, you, you see what he's saying, don't you, Ron? He, he's saying actually it's even better than we were talking about. You can't dig until you're at the bottom of the slope, you can't dig but there, but later you can do the six to one slope afterwards, at the end.
Six to one slope home, don't be rolling if you don't put seed much on, you tell that sample. Common sense tell you that. It's kind of dirt that we're digging, mostly sugar sand dirt, the ones that you, I call it the graveyard dirt. A five to one slope, a six one slope, this going, this going, 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 going right out. If you don't see much, well, you know, the surface we do, we're done, we're turning back into pasture, man. I mean, we, we take, that's like, meanwhile, you're going to have vegetation there.
Go ahead, Mr. Kirby.
Well, I think that to be taught, that should be taught on LDR, what we're going to do, how we're going to accept that pit at the end.
Mr. Chair, I think we've got a march orders. Um, I'm hearing one hundred foot from the property line, minimum, minimum of six to one slope to be dressed. to be dressed as the implementation continues. And we will meet the minimum DFT specification for standard city and multiple, all disturbed areas. That's kind of what I'm hearing, right? No reasons?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Think I've got more march orders. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, this is over in our landscape parks department. We having a hard time hiring some, uh, maintenance workers. Revised job descriptions, remove supervisory city of apartments, in addition, remove the educational apartments, on-call position, change of layout mechanic, consider it proper, out of the pool. We got too many requirements on folks who try to mow grass and help the ball fields. Recommend a motion approved, revise job script for maintenance tech one, on-call permit for maintenance tech one, landscape department.
So we, we have a mo-, we have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, elevator maintenance, uh, we received two bids, uh, one with sixty-six hundred or two fifty per hour or three hundred overtime, the other was at twenty-four thousand three hundred fifty per hour. Recommend a motion approved bid contract amount elevator for Rick Shaw.
So, sir, they have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
In my final walk on item, we have a unique situation. We had a spraying contractor who quit later on. So this, no question about it, they killed some trees on man's private property. That was very upset, like the trees. Um, so what I did was I, we have a form, a schedule of values. And where acquired property due dirt damage versions, things of that nature. We've established a schedule of values, wherever files travel on our fence, or board fence, where trees of certain diameter, that we buy a tree, own a tree. We buy that and we assign a value and it's established. County attorney and I worked on this together. He prepared, he did a blanket coverage form that you just fill the blanks in, right? So at certain address, you had nine trees, twelve inch neighbor, water oak, worth X amount of dollars. In this case, it's equated to be thirty-five hundred dollars. I asked the mayor, what do you want to do, so I was paying for my trees, showed him how we did, we acquired in the wrong way. He was happy with that. So I'm requesting a motion to approve thirty-five hundred dollars to pay the gentleman because of the damaged trees, our contractor, his own business.
Oh, sir, we have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, council.
I'll make mine fairly quick. The walk on item was a request to board about resolution twenty, twenty-two R fifty. It is basically a resolution asking you to support an application for a vision zero initiative planning grant to make our roads and highways safe. The SPOT approached our staff and said, we got all this planning money. The goal is Department of Transportation, trying to get zero fatalities. We are encouraging people to go out and do this study, figure out how you can improve your roads to reduce your fatalities. So all we're doing is asking you to adopt this resolution that says we support an application for this planning grant.
Sir, we have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
My next item I have is RFP twenty twenty-two DD, rail consulting services. In a nutshell, railroad is working on roads, analyzing roads, doing railroads consulting. It's something that is not in our expertise or our wheelhouse. We don't do railroads. So we want to hire a railroad advisor. We went out to RFDs, I worked with several firms, uh, but when it came time to submission, only one firm submitted a proposal. The firm was Blue Jay Advisors, they come highly recommended, proposal was reasonable, and they are an expert in the field. So we're asking you to approve and recommend an award RFP twenty twenty-two DD to Blue Jay Advisors to be our rail consultant at the NFMP.
So move, in second. Before we vote, David, uh, does this cover the under panel?
They will be able to cover all, all railroads.
So they're just consultants, correct?
Yes, they're just consultants to help us figure out how to pick a short line rail provider. How to finance the rates.
Who, who's giving maintenance on, uh, what we already have?
From the panels, Kevin hires from Georgia, I believe.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, you're exactly right. Right now, we're mercy on a contractor out of Georgia. Uh, we get put on news, which is somewhat record times. You know, on a Friday afternoon, you had the, you had the damn man out of Georgia.
Uh, I, I just want, okay. We have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
The next item is a level surplus in utility revenues. The good news is when we took out on Fort White, ended up collecting a lot more revenues than we anticipated. So in the current year budget, we've collected more money than we thought. The bad news is we've had some expenditures within the town. We hired a utility director mid-year and some of our utility costs were higher than we anticipated. So all we're asking is to approve Bud, B budget amendment twenty-two eighty-three, which would move the revenues that were in excess of budgeted, incorporate those monies and put them towards where we need to spend.
So move, sir. We have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
This one's another real simple one, in the budget is the EMPG grant, GO three nine nine. You approve it every year, we're asking you to approve the contract for this grant. It's the fund emergency grant.
So move, sir. We have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
And then finally, BA twenty-two eighty-five. Uh, there is something called a sans, uh, storage device. It is a giant computer device that stores all these hard drives, if you were, all these data points. And Lincoln, obviously, is much more of an expert than I am. All of your county information programs, your data, your records, all that are stored on these devices or backed up onto these devices. They have reached the end of their life. They will not be supported after October one. Parts are gonna be harder and harder to find, some of them already are virtually impossible to find. It was proposed, uh, supported to be put into the capital projects for next fiscal year. It did not make the cut, but we feel it's important enough to make sure that we don't have a catastrophic failure of our data technology. To ask you to go ahead and approve it out of the current year funds from facilities and from, uh, nine-one-one center to get new sans devices so that we don't have a critical failure.
I just moved the board, I've done all night, and I already, I make a move to approve budget amendment twenty-two dash eighty-five in the amount of a hundred ninety thousand six hundred dollars.
Sir, we have a motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
David, real quick, uh, just for, in this, uh, particular, I, I, item here, you know, about time to buy computers outdated. Uh, what kind of reserves does Todd have set aside for such, such as this in his budget?
He does not.
Okay.
So traditionally, what the county has done for years, because IT never had a budget at all. And what we did was when Todd had to buy equipment, he charged to whatever department used that equipment. And so he's never had a chance to build others.
Well, next year's budget cycle, I personally would just ask staff, you know, y'all investigate that because sitting here as the chair of nine-one-one committee, I learned a lot about dysfunctional computers that happens overnight. And it just seems like a big smart business for us to try to create some type of reserve, you know, to be, uh, the budget amendments, it, it's all one thing, but it would be the transparency part that we just did on the capital projects, I think, to be a very, just, you know, it's, uh, that, that's important. We don't want everyone to what the city ran into.
But, but reserve would be only for those houses, departments on the public act meeting.
Correct, 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 correct.
So like Comcast had lightning strikes.
Yeah.
Couple of our departments lost switches.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, switches aren't really, you know, overly expensive, they're a thousand, two thousand bucks. But it had time, and, you know, there is no place where that type of replacement is taken.
And then when this, yeah, when this start, stuff starts coming, you can rely on people like Lawrence and Todd, you know, that's got the knowledge in this stuff that, eh, eh, this is an important part of this, a very important part, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good. Commissioner Murphy, just for the board's information, and I know David supports this also, we're very firm, even though we charge with your pockets, it goes through IT because they are the experts. We get requests on top of staff, I need this, I need that. We just don't take it like that, we install it, do we need that?
Yeah, yeah, it did.
Thank you very much. I think, I think, uh, you're off to your neck and your tail.
Okay, um, I, I brought it up last week about the grading on the private road of Grids League, uh, gridway. Uh, one of the problems that the people have out there, the reason we're running it, is the issue, uh, basically to grade the road, we're looking at a hundred and forty-five dollars worth of work. The contract that was sent to them, when you add contingency administration, legal fees, notices, subtotes, statutory, basically tax collection, comes out to two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. So we're charging them twenty-five hundred dollars to do a hundred million dollars worth on their road. And, uh, I'm asking, I, I, I wanna ask the board that, uh, you know, if they're willing to do this contract, I, I think being they're already paying taxes in the county, we should waive that fee. Uh, and just charge them what the actual road rating cost.
If we're gonna do that for everybody to do this in through our whole county?
Well, we, we're trying to get this private road.
No, 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 that's not what I asked. If we waive all these fees, or here's the amount of money that they can do it, here is what it takes to implement that program. Are we gonna waive this for everybody in the county, from the north end to the south end, from the east to the west?
On the private roads? Yeah, I'll, I'll say yes, on private roads, yeah. Because they're already making county staff to do the.
Not only on private road, but in assessment. This will be assessment, this will be assessment. So any assessment from now on that we have in this county, whether street light or whatever, sidewalks or whatever, paved roads or whatever, we gonna waive everything else except for the budget costs of them. And that's what we saying.
I like to ask a question on the street lights, is there a startup cost on this? What do, what do we have with street lights? Cause that's something I'm really concerned about.
So when you, when you calculate an assessment under the statute, our private road assessment program is ours. But we model it after the state's, uh, uniform method of collection. Because it's private property, we have to collect the administrative costs that are incurred by the public to administer the program because the program's on private property.
So that happens with street lights, okay?
That's gonna happen with your street lights because it's something, now the private road assessment program is something that this board created. And so, you know, if y'all wanna talk about it as a matter of policy, you can address that.
Joel's right, we do have to, you're gonna assess it, charging on the property taxes you have to. The, the closest thing I can imagine in my district mainly is street lights, things such as that nature. So if we're charging them an administrative cost.
The, the tax collector cost is three percent, seventy-two dollars. But somebody gonna have to pay him. What, so we'll, so we'll pay the group, we say, I mean, we'll just open a cattle warrants now, and we ain't no way we gonna keep them in the game. Yeah, what we about, what we passing?
Can I, can I maybe simplify my acting right here? On all of your other issues, usually allowing to do the work is up there high enough that this, it really paid attention to, right? So we, we have to remember this is a new program, grading on is a brand new program, right? We used to bring it up to certain standard, capital side, maintenance side. This is simply going to be graded. So I sit down and calculated what fuel, labor, and useful equipment was. I come up with roughly three hundred dollars a mile, just what it cost to grade a road today. That's grade what's there. So we took the length of this road and equated it about a hundred fifty bucks, graded one time. And that's what the constituents have. And when you went through the processes y'all were talking about, they got the bill, what Commissioner Ford said. It turned out to be twenty-five hundred dollars to do a hundred fifty dollars worth of work, one time a year. Now, after that, I would logically assume that you would consider a new program. You would take all those miscellaneous attorney fees and advertising fees and all that off of there, and it would be more powerful to be somewhere around a hundred fifty dollars divided by fourteen people, which is that much money. What they could not digest is when they look down there, you know, two hundred something dollars per household, that's what they, they had heartbreak with. So therefore, it didn't make the full ride to get the support. Well, Commissioner Ford, now to our world, Lord, y'all always, all one is done, nobody supports it. We're not paying three hundred dollars, so it's kind of misleading at best. Am I making sense? You, you opened this process that you started, once you get it in place, you will have all those fees, right? But. All of them. It'll still have a lot of it, I'm gonna show you why. Okay, well, I, I'll stay corrected then, but anyway. So possibly, alright, that we did tonight. If you go and look through it, because we use the uniform method of collection, we have to certify this to the tax collector, for the tax collector to put it on the tax bill. And there's a statutory process for that, but if you look through your packet, you'll see where it has to be advertised in the newspaper, that's an expense. Uh, we have our, we share the cost of that outside council with all of our special assessments, business incidentals. So that cost actually is pretty reasonable. But there are certain things that just can't be avoided like that, that newspaper fee, and you don't want an ad cost.
Eighteen hundred of the twenty-five hundred legal fees.
Yeah.
When we have Carlos, like, who's ever here?
Heather is also, I, she's paying that, right? She's paying for that publication, that money. And they're.
Things we pay for.
We pay publication.
She does that, several, okay, then.
She builds it into the assessment.
She builds it as a legal fee, the cost of the publication, it's part of the legal services. I'm asking her to add on that. But even certain costs that can't be avoided because we have to get it on the tax bill, and if we get on the tax, it must be.
But, Mr. Chair, if I, y'all just said it fine, I guess I missed all this, so. When it all started, I said, Commissioner Ford, it's about three hundred dollars a mile, it's just what it, that math is, and then how many times a year? And I did say exactly that, I still say that. So we logically said, oh, great, they can afford paying it, y'all. How many times a year, please, more than once a year, when you take a hundred fifty divided by four, paying it, that's what it costs. Well then, when we follow this process, twenty-five hundred dollars versus a hundred fifty dollars, could just do exactly what we're gonna do for a hundred fifty dollars.
But how many of these are gonna come out of that? I mean, how many, how many more times you gonna run into this situation? I mean, this is not gonna be common where they only want to grade it one time a year, I mean, it's, it's.
But I'm sure they would want it graded more than one time, if they could.
Truly, yeah.
But it's a hundred and seventy-eight dollars per household for a hundred fifty dollars worth of grade. That's what they're looking at, you know?
That's too much, it's, it's too much going on.
That's what I'm saying.
So.
How you say it's too much going, man? Uh, when, 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 when here's the prize, and this is the prize, to get what you want. I, 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 I don't want, my, my, my residents in my district paid for somebody else to live on private road, they chose to live on that private road. Or you just pay that, you just, you just pay, you just pay to have it graded, and it's kinda gonna eat everything else. If we gonna do that for that assessment, we'll do it for every assessment from town.
That's why we're willing to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I like Mr. Ford's idea. If we could just, everybody, if they only want it graded once a year, can we just say, get them to give us permission to enter private property once a year, go grade it?
And they can pay for that, then, then you're.
They can pay for that.
What's, what's killing you, Commissioner, is the, is the participation in the assessment program. And if they're not participating in the assessment program, and they literally just wanna get it graded once a year, maybe we need to have a program where people on these kind of small roads, maybe we have a threshold under a mile, something like that. And they can come to public works and say, hey, here's everybody on my street has given permission for y'all to come out. It's three hundred dollars a mile, here's our check, can you come out? Maybe we, I mean, we can, if we have authorization to go on private property, and if the public is being compensated for the use of public, of the public facilities, that's legal.
Well, let's go to that, let's go on that, right?
If it's.
All those fees, I didn't want them.
And, and I think it still covers the aspect that, as Mr. Williams said, I agree with Ron, you know, they chose to live on.
It's private.
Then, then again, there's still paying taxes.
The, the issue with cost, this is so expensive, this is the first time I've heard, but the issue is exactly what Commissioner Williams says. The county's going to incur those administrative costs, they have to be paid. But if we do a one-off program, there's no administrative cost to be paid, and, and Kevin's office.
I like that better anyway, just taking the tax collector out and everybody else, you think it's right to judge them?
Letting it get more peaceful to participate in the program. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would, because this is the first time this went full ride for grading on, this would do adventure forms. I do think we need to limit the road mile or less, that way it doesn't get too convoluted. Does that make sense? If you go above a mile, I think another process needs to be put in place.
Let's, let's get together, come up to the program, and they can consider.
I mean, you know, we see how it works out, it might, it might not, you know, we just see how it works, but, yeah.
I think we get a lot more to space at that, Ron.
Okay, so, we're in agreement with this, and this is just for y'all to.
We're gonna work it one way, then again, and then you'll bring it back to us.
Do we need a mo, we, we don't need any mo.
Bring it back, okay.
Did I be a? The next thing is. It's a Richardson Community Center? Yep. Open comments, Chris. Open comments, Chris. Oh, open com, uh, com.
Yeah.
Well, it.
We got one to, yeah.
She got one.
But, okay. Miss, Mister, uh. Mr. Williams wants to speak on it first.
Student's pretty, uh, uh, confused there, too.
You're, you're in a bit of a test.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Over the last budget year, uh, there have been some conversation about the relationship from this board between the Richardson Community Center and the Recreation Department. And this board has said they wanted to separate it, wanted to know what the duties of the, of the, of the Richardson and Browser Board was, and the duties of the athletic department, duties board. I think we have that to prepare to bring back to the board now. Uh, we met with the membership of the board last Wednesday, last Tuesday.
Oh, this Tuesday.
And, uh, and they are in, in an agreement. Richardson is a unique situation where you have a community center and a recreation department housed in the same building. So, there was a time that there was a, a clear clarity on what was Richardson Recreation Department and the rent, the rolling walls, and what was Richardson Administrative Board walls. The Administrative Board of Richardson Community Center should work just like the Administrative Board down in Fort White, Mason City, uh, Winfield, Deep Creek, Springville, South Columbia, where they have a board, and their board runs the after hours, uh, hourly thing that the Recreation Department do not get involved in. Mason City do not get involved in athletics with the board, with the board, under the board's commission. We have a athletic director and staff under the athletic director. Under the terms and agreement that, uh, was discussed with the Recreation Board was that, that there will be this separation. Here are your functions and what you should and should not do. The, from eight to five or eight from the hour that extended at Richardson Rec Center is under the Board of County Commissioners as a Recreation Department. Anything after hours, uh, rental of the building for the Richardson Recreation Committee should have nothing to do with the Richardson Recreation Department. As of how it was in the past, a person wanted to rent the, uh, complex for, uh, activity, they went to Mario or someone in the staff at Richardson. Here again, we intermating Richardson Recreation Director and the Richardson Administrative Board will be interwining them. When somebody calls to rent Winfield, they don't call the Recreation Department. They call the designated person of that Recreation Center to rent that building. When someone wanna rent any building in Columbia County on the community center, they do not call the Recreation Department. They call someone that is designated to make that rental agreement. We should not add a Recreation Board, a Recreation entity under the Board of County Commission should be accepting money from anybody to rent the building. That should come from someone that is designated to by the Richardson, uh, Recreation Committee to be able to rent and receive the money for that building, not the Richardson Recreation Department. So, it was agreed upon that, that there has been, that it was admitted there has been a intertwining that Mr. Murphy talked about at times of the Recreation Board and Athletic Department up there. If there are, the only responsibility that the Recreation Committee have with the, will, will Richardson Recreation Committee have with the Athletic Department, they don't tell the Recreation Department, I want this program, that program, and that program, they recommend. They cannot start a program for the county under the Recreation Department. The Athletic Director has to do that. They are the one, he's the one, or she's the one that's, that carry out the athletic program for the county through the Recreation Department Director or Designated Staff, not the Richardson Recreation Committee Board. The Recreation, Richardson Recreation Board will do just like other Recreation Boards do, and you have seen them do that in the past. Uh, when they want a piece of equipment or something, they say, county, this piece of equipment costs sixty-five thousand dollars, I got thirty thou, thirty thousand dollars, if you give us all thirty thousand dollars. They still have the ability to do that, but the separation between the Board and the Athletic Department under this process will be dissolved. There won't be any intertwining between the two of them. The other thing would be that the Recreation Director do not have to be staged at Richardson Community Center, or Recreation Department. Roger Little was the Recreation of the city for this whole county for years and had his own office. So, what, what, what we're saying is, we're, we're doing what the Board asked. The question that was asked, now, these are the answers to them to make sure that there's no intertwining between the Board, Recreation Board, and the Richardson, the county Recreation Department. And I think it's a good win-win and a good fit where we got that clarity between the two. The Recreation Board knows what they have to, uh, Richardson Board know what they had to do in what their job is, and the county Athletic Director knows what his job is.
So, David, you gonna bring us a proposal to look at, Mr. Voto?
Absolutely. Okay. I look forward to that, and then, uh, Mr. Ron, Richardson Community Center Board is what you're saying. Okay, got you, he's saying Recreation.
But the Recreation Department will be the county Recreation.
Right, correct, county Recreation.
We'll be the Recreation for the whole county.
Yes.
Because I'm just like you, Mr. Williams, I don't want my people in my district paying for recreation in your district.
Well, they do it for the whole county. Just like when we did with the summer program down in Fort White, that we established down in Fort White. That was done through that Recreation Department.
I think we, we took a great step as a board this year by experimenting, if you wanna call it, with Fort White, and, uh, that, that worked real good, and I commend everybody here at the vote board because we, that was a, that was a real success. And, uh, so we just take that feat off of it, and build, go into the recreation, whatever direction we all decide we want.
The, and they made that clear now, the Athletic Director is not Richardson Athletic Director. He's the county Recreation Director.
Agreed.
Dispense of recreation with this whole county.
Agreed.
And then, by him not housing Richardson, change that away, that I'm the, the vicinity that he's the Athletic Director for Richardson.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Takes that perception, I guess, yeah.
And you feel clarity there.
Yeah, I look forward to David, uh, sooner the better, you know, stop all the street talk, and, uh, uh, cause, uh, I'm, I look forward to the presentation, and we just agree, we can, we can do it, or whatever you want to do.
And I, I look forward to it. Okay, if there's no more discussion with the commissioners, I think we have three people that wanna say something about Richardson Community Center. These are legal cards to fill out for this. I'm gonna do the cards first, though, if that's okay, people that filled out the card. Uh, Conrad? Two minutes, yeah.
I need, I need but a minute, I need to explain this.
You gonna, you gonna speak frankly and quickly, ain't ya?
My name's Conrad, well, I'm a four-year old, not a six-year-old, I'm a governor of Lake City, Florida. I was here to speak on behalf of Richardson, but you're saying the Rec Department is gonna have another eight-five, and after five.
How long, sometime they have someone there until nine o'clock? And they have someone there on Saturday, that Rec Department itself.
If you have your director, you're gonna hire like an assistant, other people to exit and run.
Yes.
What you gotta vote? I think these people right here at the pickleball.
Yeah.
Committee, they were just representing there. I went out and watched them the other day, and I think some of those men did the great thing, John.
Be well.
Also, uh, uh, we need, also, man, let's try to make some time for some of these kids with some activities, you know, because they're in school now. And we might have to do a little extra something to, uh, uh, help the kids out. I mean, I can volunteer some time. Paying, I can volunteer some more time, you know? But just look at it, man, it work is staying out and having it going really smooth, okay? Because these people right here, y'all standing your best. I probably, that's what I, man, I hear a little bit, I got a little sore. But, uh, there's other things that, oh, I don't like that, but, uh, the, these kids need some activities, man, we need to teach them some stuff, we need to keep them out of the street, shit, we need to keep them.
Out, out of time is bad time.
The whole program will be initiated through the Recreation Director.
Appreciate it. I'm not up here to choose sides, I'm not here to get to speak, and I wanna speak on brand with everybody.
And thank you, Conrad.
Well, David, if you would, do it. Except for a good job of getting, we gotta point out to where we can, uh, you know, people like Mr. Conrad can attend, you know? Is Liz still here?
She, she left.
She left, okay.
Uh, Carol Perry, come on up, Carol.
I was, uh, two weeks ago, I understand you're saying the Athletic Director, right?
Hey, Martin, is that, you were talking about the, the Athletic Director will, will run on this?
Yeah, for Recreation.
Recreation.
Right.
Uh, I may be pretty, uh, on this, but I'm just wondering, does, uh, does Mr. Cop have anything to do with this?
He's the Athletic Director for the county.
Good, 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 that's, that's amazing. But, uh, he's been very good at, with Athletic, you know, having them out when they need things, and making programs for them, that's why I was here, to make sure he's the tailor for them. I would say also that, that he don't have to be, he won't be out there?
No, he will not be housed at Richardson. He'll have his own, uh, Recreation Office, Columbia County Recreation Director's Office.
Okay, but he, he have people.
They're hired?
He will have people under him.
Yes. Yes.
I assume, that's what I'm, I'm happy to hear of that, and I appreciate y'all putting your talent.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. We have one more, please?
Yep.
State your name for us.
Uh, first name is Lewis, Genos, M U N O C, three-one-six, Southwest. Three words, three, I'm a reedman.
Thank you.
I would like to commend the county commissioners, and commend these folks right here. Y'all are headed in the right direction, I really believe in what you're doing. I only have one suggestion, don't take offense. Comming with the money, any checks written, gotta say Columbia County on it. Any money that comes through has to come to y'all.
Yes, and, and that's why we're doing the separation between Columbia County Rec Department and, uh, the, the Richardson Community Center Board. That's the reason for doing that.
Any activity that requires payment, that payment regardless of which director's amulet has to be mabled Columbia County.
That's not our money, that's the Rec Committee money, yeah.
And you can turn around and pay them.
No, no.
That's to keep folks out of trouble.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any open public?
Yep.
Open comments. So, I'm opening, open public comments now.
If I understand, this, my name's Don, Houston. Two-two-three, Southwest, Cheltenham, Lake City, four, two-two-four, I'm two, two-two-two-five. Uh, some of this is kinda yet to be decided, is that right?
No.
You say another?
No. All right.
The, the board has. We have voted on it. We have voted on it. The board is probably gonna take my recommendation.
Okay.
Uh, and, and all we're doing is separating the two entities, that's it all.
Nothing I'm changing, we separating the two, okay, I can question, okay, we, we play pickleball, uh, Tuesday mornings and Thursday mornings, and it's usually the tired people that's there. Uh, and, cause working people can't come in, but then, we have other times, uh, like, uh, Sunday afternoons, and Monday nights, and Thursday nights. And so, out, my, out, my concern is, uh, we still be able to play.
Oh, yeah, you gonna still be able to play. Pickleball is a recreation program under the Recreation Director.
Okay.
We're real pleased with everything that's been.
Twenty-seventh theme? That's what, what's on there?
Forty-seven.
That's why we've had our first term, and they have one every year, so they'll, people be able to do that. And so, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that everything's gone, we worked out between the two entities. I believe we'll still be able to do what we've been.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's why I'm.
Thank you, sir.
We've been real pleased with, I mean, I've known Mario, I'm probably like said, all my life, and, uh, known Mario for a long time now, but in a much more personal way, since we've been in pickleball.
Okay.
And those pickleball being so intricate, you know, cause it's really grown, if you have any input, uh, I'd recommend you reach out to Mr. Kraus, and, you know?
I understand that's what I should do, I, I figured.
You know, telling what your schedules are, and, you know, see things.
We wanna make sure everybody's happy. And of course, Mario working directly with, uh, David, there's definitely gonna be a good resolution.
Mr. Moore?
Uh, boy, starting clock on me, uh, just trying to figure out if they're having any minutes on to get a chance to talk.
You get two minutes, and it'll go to two minutes and thirty seconds if you run over.
Mr. Chairman, uh, in all due respect, uh, Mr. Commissioner Williams, uh, I'm disappointed to a certain extent, and it was not a, uh, town hall meeting held as to how this backroom deal got worked out as to what it was gonna come to look like. This is a community center where this whole community should have been involved in the process, in my opinion. Uh, I stand before you today, uh, asking that, uh, you consider taking action and dismailing the current R C C advisory board and build it back with young men and women from the community who have a vision for kids beyond sports. Uh, most of the community support me on this concept, also, uh, others and myself are asking that a youth advisory board be accepted, just ranging from the age of thirteen to nineteen, to suggest youth ideals to the R C C advisory board. Others and myself believe that if, uh, the current board is purged, and newly young men was joining in conjunction with their youth advisory board, it will begin to get the healing of the lack of youth programs in our community for both girls and boys. I think the current status quo, uh, for our community will no longer fly. I think it is time we listen to what the community wants, because doing your way, meaning the commissioner's way, has and is failing us in many ways. And, uh, Commissioner Williams, uh, I have the utmost respect for you, uh, you represent. Uh, you've represented this, uh, uh, district, uh, right as long as I've been, uh, alive. Uh, so I don't want to butt heads with you on it, but I want better for, uh, the Richardson Community Center. And, uh, that's the key, uh, that I'm willing to have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Nine of the set of, I've had over a hundred calls on, on Richardson and nine of the set of the calls, uh, from Richardson alone now. Uh, this just won't, this work. Uh, I'm not for this, I'm not for banning the Richardson Community Center Board. I have suggested that the board put on, uh, either as a, a, a token of, of, uh, of, of, of peace as, uh, to replace some of the board members with younger people on the board uh, in order to have those fresh ideas. And the board has agreed to do that. There are some on, on the board that don't need to be on board. And just give them a chance to work through this.
Okay. We have any more, uh, public comment? Just state your name, ma'am. Let us know who you are.
My name's Karen Yels. Um, I live in Oklahoma. I've been here for between fifteen and twenty years. Um, I'm actually out here outside of your corporate meeting. I'm a member of the American State Assembly and the Columbia State Assembly, uh, called Columbia County Assembly. This is actually, for those of you that don't know, the government that you were owed. We're not a democracy. We're Republican. I'm a government. And I'm here because we've been doing research and done some things that we want to want. Looking into your laws, as Americans, we are the only people who are in these counties that are not supposed to be paying your taxes because we pay for everything from the beginning of line. These taxes are for all your corporations. They're for your government services corporations. They're for your employees, and they're for your dependents. And these are your laws. So I guess the question is, what are you guys doing to look into this and fix the situation? Because you have U.S. citizens, three different counties, municipal, territorial, and federal, and then you have Americans. The three faces are your taxpayers. So.
Y'all have any questions or comments?
If not, I can leave you a card. We would like to know what's being done, what's being talked about to get this remedy.
Did, did one of y'all text me earlier? Okay, somebody text me. Well, so I got an email. Okay. I got an email from Donald. Okay.
That wasn't us.
Okay. Did you email the council or something?
No, we sent out registered mail. We didn't email anyone.
Oh, okay.
Again, we've got registered mails.
Yeah, he is copying and pasting some of us.
So I get one of these every year. We've paid it every year, but this is not our taxes, and you come to laws that show it over and over again. Um, you can check with the Secretary of State, the Secretary of State. We all have our political statuses declared, published, cured on the public record. There's no mistaking who we are and who we're not.
So if I understand you to say you're not a taxpayer, you don't pay taxes?
No, I'm not a taxpayer. A taxpayer actually works for the Queen and, yeah.
Ma'am, we, we're going to pass the two minutes, but we appreciate it.
That's fine.
Does she want to come? Do you want to come up also, or? Okay, okay, I didn't know, I didn't know. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Any staff comments?
Yes, sir.
How about co-pays manager?
Been a long game, definitely.
Uh, commissioner comments? Do you have a motion for adjournment?
Oh, certainly.